This is the third microphone test. Nothing. And this is another microphone test.
Good evening, let's call to order the special council meeting closed session of April fourth, twenty twenty three. Before we get started, I'd like to remind participants of some procedural items for the meeting. During the meeting, remote participants will remain muted when not speaking. If remote participants have a question or comment, please use the raise hand feature. Speakers will be called upon to speak one at a time. Members of the public may participate in person, online, or by telephone to provide public comment. Please submit a speaker card to city clerk in person or use the raise hand feature online to request to speak star nine on a telephone. Location and teleconference meeting details are available on the council agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom. Captions can be displayed or hidden using the live transcript button. Following the closed session, the regular council meeting will begin at seven P M. We encourage the public to stay tuned for the regular meeting. City Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Present.
Council member Melton.
Present.
Council member Sisneros.
Present.
Council member Mellinger.
Present.
Council member Srinivasan.
Present.
Council member Sel.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to address the city council on the closed session items. Members of the public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk or use the raise hand button now or dial star nine on a telephone if you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first. Then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it is their turn to speak. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no in-person speaker cards. City Clerk, do we have any remote participants wishing to address the council?
No, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public comment and the city council will now adjourn to closed session. We'll see everybody back here at seven P M.
This is a test. This is a test. This is a test. This is a test.
This is a test.
Good evening. Let's go ahead and call to order our council meeting of April 4, 2023. Before we get started, I'd like to remind participants of some procedural items for tonight's meeting. During the meeting, remote participants will remain muted when not speaking. If a remote participant has a question or a comment, please use the raised hand feature to request to speak. Speakers will be called upon to speak one at a time. A random order of voice vote will be administered by the city clerk for each vote. Members of the public may participate in person, online, or by telephone to provide public comment. Please submit a speaker card to the city clerk in person or use the raised hand feature to request to speak, star nine on your telephone. Location and teleconference meeting details are available on the council agenda. Captions are available to viewers accessing this meeting via Zoom. Captions can be displayed or hidden using the live transcript button. Comments on matters not on the agenda must be submitted prior to the time I call the item for oral communications. Comments on agenda items must be submitted prior to the time I close a public hearing on that agenda item. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes, and time limits will be strictly enforced. Guidelines are posted on the city's website and on the council meeting agenda. First, please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. City clerk, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Klein.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Present.
Councilmember Melton.
Present.
Councilmember Sisneros.
Present.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Present.
Councilmember Srinivasan.
Present.
Councilmember Sal.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, may we have the closed session report?
Thank you. Council met in closed session on two items. On the first one, council unanimously authorized the city attorney to opt into the national prescription opioid litigation. And on the second item, there is nothing to report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, we have two special orders of the day. Get my script up. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to make some special recognitions. As we continue with our Earth Month celebrations, this evening, we would like to recognize one way our community demonstrates its commitment to environmental sustainability. Tonight, we recognize Sunnyvale local businesses that have achieved the Green Business Certification. The Green Business Program recognizes businesses that go above and beyond to adapt environmentally sound practices in areas of energy efficiency, water conservation, solid and hazardous waste reduction, and pollution prevention. The city of Santa Clara County staff work hand in hand to make the program a success, and I would like to thank Saburi Sai, who is with us representing the county's Office of Sustainability for all of her hard work. I would also like to thank Mary Lindamith, Environmental Program Specialist with Sunnyvale's Zero Waste Program, and Sunnyvale's liaison to the California Green Business Program. Tonight, newly certified or recertified Sunnyvale businesses will be recognized for their achievements. The environmental standards become more and more difficult to achieve over time, so I thank all of you for your leadership, commitment to the environment, and to sustainable practices. The city of Sunnyvale would now like to recognize this year's Sunnyvale California Green Businesses, and as I read your name, please come to the lectern, and then I'll come around to give you your certificate. First is Robert Bondur, Director of EHS at JSR Micro. Next is Dr. Jennifer Chang, Jennifer Chang DDS. Next is Michelle Pereira, Director of Sunnyvale Community Center and the Senior Center. And finally, Chong Yang Jung, the owner of the Cotton and Silk, who is unable to join us tonight, but we would still like to publicly recognize her business. So let me come forward and all of you that I've named, please come join me at the left. Good. So I just want to thank you, and it doesn't look like Robert. Robert didn't make it, but first, Dr. Chang, I just want to thank you for your hard work and being a green business here in Sunnyvale.
Thank you so much.
And next is Michelle Pereira. So thank you for making the community center and the senior center so green, and all of your staff. Thank you very much. And we will make sure that the other attendees get their awards later. Okay? Thank you. And to close out our special orders of the day, we celebrate Poetry Month. April is nationally recognized as Poetry Month, the largest literary celebration in the world, making poetry's important place in the cultural and in our culture and in our daily lives. The Academy of Poets founded National Poetry Month in April 1996 with an aim to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, encouraging the reading of poems, assisting teachers to bring poetry into their classrooms, increasing the attention paid to poetry by national and local media, encouraging increased publication and distribution of poetry books, and encouraging the support for poets and poetry. Our intended speaker was unable to make it this evening, but she wanted me to basically give you a message: go out and read and possibly compose some poetry. So on behalf of the Sunnyvale City Council, it is my pleasure to proclaim April as Poetry Month in Sunnyvale. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in really quick. I do make two clarifications and shout out to our city attorney for remembering it. On the second item, we met to discuss labor negotiations with SMA, and there's nothing to report on it, and I want to clarify that on the first item, the vote was six yes with one no of Councilmember Melton voting no. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll now move on to oral communications. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to address council on topics not listed on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to 15 minutes and may be extended or continued after the general business section of the agenda. Individuals are limited to one appearance with a maximum up to three minutes per speaker. A reminder to the public, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk, raise your digital hand, or dial star nine on your telephone now if you wish to address council. I will call on members of the public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphones when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Before we get to the public, Vice Mayor Dean has several announcements.
Thank you. First up is Boarding Commission application deadline. Recruitment is underway for all boards and commissions, including the Arts Commission, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Category One or Two, Board of Library Trustees, Heritage Preservation Commission, Housing and Human Services Commission, Human Relations Commission, Categories One or Two, Parks and Recreation Commission, Personnel Board, which is council nominated, Planning Commission, or Sustainability Commission, Category One or Two. Applications are due by 4:00 PM on Thursday, April 27, in order to be scheduled for an interview with council on Monday, May 8, or Tuesday, May 9. General eligibility requirements include Sunnyvale residency. For more information, visit sunnyvale.ca.gov and search Boards and Commissions, or call the office of the city clerk at 408-730-7483 to request an application. The application has been updated to reflect recent council action creating the Human Relations Commission and modifying the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission and Sustainability Commission categories. Applications to serve on a city of Sunnyvale Board or Commission are accepted on a continuous basis. Applications received after the deadline will be considered for future openings. And my second and final announcement is Sunnyvale's third 2022-2023 Drive Electric event is here. Upgrading to an EV can help the climate and your wallet. Sunnyvale's Drive Electric program provides opportunities for community members to explore EVs. This webinar, EV Financial Incentives Clinic, will take place on Wednesday, April 5, from five, sorry, April 5, from 7 to 8 PM. This info-packed free workshop is available in Mandarin, Spanish, and English. You will receive help purchasing an EV by learning about the many financial assistance, sorry, you will receive help purchasing an EV by learning about the many financial assistance programs for income qualifying residents. More guidance to apply to EV assistance programs is available by opting for a free consultation and the post-event survey. To register and learn more about Sunnyvale's Drive Electric program and future events, visit sunnyvale.ca.gov and search Drive Electric, or email green@sunnyvale.ca.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have two speaker cards. First up is Alina Masumi. And you have three minutes to speak.
You're giving me this opportunity to speak. I've been working on a research project for a school, which has led me to discover a lot about the link between mental illness to substance abuse to homelessness, which is what I'm here to talk about today. I've discovered that majority of people who get dragged into substance abuse tend to be mentally ill, which I which I found would require better therapy measures to be taken. And I've researched a lot into why people do drugs to begin with, and most of it to either feel good, enhance their performance, or due to peer pressure. And the science behind addiction basically is when someone starts doing a drug, it starts binding to receptors in their brain and it starts to increase their serotonin and adrenaline production. And addiction is formed when the receptors and neurotransmitters in the brain stop working when the drug isn't present. So the person is sucked into depression and anxiety and sometimes even drug-induced psychosis as a result, which leads them to stay addicted to the drug because it's the only thing that makes them feel good about themselves. And there are a few problems I discovered with how the rehab system works, which is rehab is, while it's personally catered to each person, it's also not. There are certain procedures and certain standards that need to be followed that don't always work for everyone. And another thing is that with the rehab system, most centers, it's like people are kind of kept isolated and in a more sheltered area while they heal and sober up. However, this doesn't prepare them for outside life and what life is going to be like once they are sober and once they leave the center. And while there are anti-discriminatory laws in a lot of jobs, there is still discrimination against people with histories of drug use, especially those who have who have like felonies as a result of drug use. So not being able to find a job and not being able to keep up with the high living costs in the area since the median rent in the Bay Area right now is like $3,000 while the national average is only 1,200. That causes people to relapse and go back to doing drugs because they sorry, they kind of feel as if their addiction follows them everywhere and has kind of permanently ruined their lives. And I've seen this even in like people my age at school who have dealt with these problems and have gone to rehab and they have come out kind of more traumatized and worse than they were going in. And so I'm just here today to discuss this and ask and call for a change on it because no one deserves to have to live like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next speaker is Andrea Wald.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrea Wald. I'm following up on an email that I sent to council members on March 17th. I hope you all had a chance to read it. What I sent is the presentation I was planning to make to the Sustainability Commission, which I did at their last meeting. I'm here now because I feel it's important to show up in person so all of you can know how important this matter is to me and how important it should be for all of you representing all Sunnyvale residents. The message I'm anxious for everyone to understand, which actually is very pertinent considering I just saw the presentations relating to environment and green, is how bad artificial turf is for the environment, our health, and for the safety of those playing on artificial fields. The biggest myth that has been proven to be incorrect is that artificial turf saves water. For playing fields, this certainly isn't the case. It takes 12,000 gallons of water to cool off the surface of a typical field. We can reach temperatures up to 120 degrees and the cooling effect lasts only 20 minutes. It also takes a lot of water to even produce artificial turf. And more serious injuries occur on turf, which is like falling on cement. Chemicals used to produce turf are very toxic and have been proven to cause serious health issues, including developmental issues and certain kinds of cancers. As the turf ages and disintegrates, even more of these chemicals leach out. And turf is not recyclable, so these chemicals end up in landfill or water supply. Another reason turf is bad for the environment is that replacing lawns or natural green surfaces with turf lowers the amount of CO2 that is absorbed. It also inhibits all creatures from surviving under the tarp that's placed and the lawn itself. I would love to see Sunnyvale ban this material for residential use, but more importantly, for any sports fields. I have more facts to substantiate what I've presented and can reference many other places that have banned or are looking to ban artificial turf. Leaving you with a few very appropriate quotes to end my presentation. No one can do everything for the environment, but everyone can do something to make a better world. And it is the greatest of all mistakes to do nothing because you can only do a little. Do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was my last speaker card for anyone. Anyone else in the room wish to speak under oral communications? Seeing none, City Clerk, do we have any remote participants who wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we do. We have five individuals that submitted a presentation that they'd like to speak on sequentially. First is Angela, followed by Chuck. And Angela, you've been unmuted. Let me get your presentation up and let me know when you'd like me to advance to the next slide. And I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Angela Roush, and I'm a longtime resident of Sunnyvale. As a member of livable Sunnyvale, we have three pillars we focus on: housing, transportation, and sustainability. The Village Center proposal meets all those standards. In 2017, the Village Center vision was presented. The idea was that sections would be redeveloped to include housing, retail, with the intent that these would be walkable communities. What a brilliant idea and one we fully support. My dream of not owning a car could come true. And I could walk and I could say to some who are struggling with housing insecurity, we have housing and are building more. Next slide, please. Unfortunately, what we are seeing in the latest Village Center buildings is not that. What is being built is townhouses with scant retail. Our understanding is that for retail to thrive in these village centers, there must be dense housing. Density gives us retail. Today, we are in a precarious situation. There are no design standards. And without an approved housing element, our intentions of retail and housing may not be honored. We believe a level of urgency is necessary. I'll quote a poem from a famous poet in honor of Poetry Month. "We will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation because we know our inaction and inertia will be the inheritance of the next generation. Our blunders become their burdens. But one thing is certain: If we merge mercy with might and might with right, then love becomes our legacy and change our children's birthright. So let us leave behind a country better than the ones we were left with." Thank you, Amanda Gorman and council. And our next speaker is up. I yield my time. Thank you.
Next up is Chuck Fraley, followed by Julia Liu. Chuck, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council and I'll let you know when 30 seconds remain.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Chuck Fraley and I'm with livable Sunnyvale. So currently developments have started or been proposed at four of the seven Village Center sites in Sunnyvale that I've shown on this slide. On the top right, a developer submitted a proposal to demolish the shopping center that's currently at Lake Haven and Lawrence and replace it with townhouses and then 10,000 square foot block of retail. And they give a little bit of perspective, 10,000 square feet of retail is a little bit smaller than the Off the Rails Brewing Company down on Murphy Street, down by the Caltrain Station. So that's all the retail that's going to be left after the project is done. Then just below that, there's been a proposal submitted to demolish the shopping center on Dwayne Avenue and replace it with only townhouses, no retail in that. So that neighborhood's going to lose all of their local retail. They're going to lose the market, the metro city, a bunch of restaurants and shops that are there. And it's going to be replaced with just townhouses. Then down at the bottom, there's a development in progress for two sites on either side of the 24-hour fitness that's at the corner of Fremont and Sunnyvale-Saratoga. And the retail there is being reduced down to 11,000 square feet and it's replaced with a couple, with some townhouses. And then the final one is the corner of Marion-Fremont, the corner of that intersection that has the office complexes right now. That's being replaced by townhouses and 30,000 square feet of office space. So the new office space is actually graded. It's a pretty substantial amount. But in addition, it would have been nice to have some retail added to that location so you could have a mix of housing, retail, and office space at the same site. Next slide, please. So this slide has the details of all of these proposals. But overall, Sunnyvale's going to be losing 100, almost 150,000 square feet of retail space just in these four village centers alone. And we're not getting a whole lot of housing in exchange for that. Thank you. And I will yield to the next speaker.
Next up is Julia Liu, followed by Rita Welsh. Julia, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council. I'll let you know when 30 seconds remain.
Great, thank you. Can you go to, okay, fine. Hi, this is Julia Liu, also is livable Sunnyvale and a Sunnyvale resident for close to 40 years. So following on what Angela and Chuck have said, so why did the brilliant, exciting vision in the 2017 loot for village centers not become reality? The village center areas are currently zoned to allow only a maximum 18 housing units per acre. This relatively low housing density, as well as recent state legislation, makes it very likely that the village centers will be redeveloped with townhouses and very little retail. In mixed housing developments such as the village centers, housing subsidizes the retail. There's not enough housing currently allowed at the village centers to support the robust, vibrant retail that is desired at these locations. Next slide, please. To address these issues, we would like to see city council and staff take two actions. First, try to work with the developers of the Dwayne and Lake Haven sites. It is unlikely the city can mandate changes to these developments if they comply with current zoning requirements. Also, given that Sunnyvale has not adopted an approved housing element and is therefore subject to the builder's remedy, the city may not be able to mandate changes even if the projects are not in compliance with the general plan. However, the city can offer incentives such as substantial density bonuses in exchange for developers to expand retail at these sites. Second, we would like the city to act with a sense of urgency to develop a new village center master plan, which one increases allowed density to at least 30 units per acre. Two, offers density bonuses beyond this in exchange for preserving or expanding retail. And three, increases the building height limits. The height limits are important at the village center sites where some existing retail could be preserved. For example, if a developer wanted to preserve a single-story grocery store at an existing village center site, they would need to be able to build a taller structure on the smaller remaining portion of the site. Thank you.
Next up is Rita Welsh, followed by Agnes White. Rita, you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the city council and I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. My name is Rita Welsh. I am also a member of livable Sunnyvale.
Sorry, Rita, we lost you there for a moment. Rita, we're not able to hear you. Can you please unmute again?
Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I moved to Sunnyvale in 2006. I live in District Three, near the community center. When I moved here, I was excited to see that there was a grocery store about two blocks from me. I was thinking about when I became old and couldn't drive anymore, I could get one of those old lady carts and wheel it to the store, get my groceries and walk home. And that would be perfect. I wouldn't starve. But soon after I moved in, the grocery store closed. It was at El Camino near Fair Oaks. So when I can no longer drive, I would have to rely on other people or hire Uber or do something to get to the grocery store. Now, I was more excited when I saw the future development at Fremont and Sunnyvale-Saratoga Road because I thought maybe they'll put a grocery store in there or at least a convenience market. But no, I've become disappointed as I've watched it being built. There's saving jakes, a pizza place, but you can't eat pizza every day. I mean, some people do, but I don't. So there's no grocery store. There's, I'm in a food desert. I mean, I've read about food deserts for a long time and now I'm in one. So I walked to Trader Joe's once. It took me an hour each way. And if I bought any ice cream, it would be gone by the time I got home. So please consider having more retail at the village centers to allow a walkable neighborhood, to allow people to not have to drive cars and to help our environment. And I would like to think about the Merry Center and hope that they can keep Zanato's Gurka Chicken and Country Gourmet, because those are all used all the time and they're popular places. So think about their neighborhoods when you build the centers and think about retaining the retail stores. Thank you. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Next up is Agnes White. Agnes, you've been unmuted and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello, I'm Agnes White, a Sunnyvale resident for over 25 years, and I too am a member of livable Sunnyvale. A year ago, I read a description of the village centers as providing focal points for existing neighborhoods featuring retail and service options, as well as a mix of residential infill opportunities. I pictured each village center reflecting the neighborhood's culture and providing much-needed housing. But over the past year, I have not, excuse me, I do not think the initial intent is coming to fruition. As noted earlier, based on existing proposals, Sunnyvale will lose almost 150,000 square feet of retail. In addition to the importance of retail as a revenue stream, retail creates employment opportunities, a gathering space, and sense of place for the neighborhood it supports while meeting the unique purchasing needs of the surrounding community. Sunnyvale Unity represents the city's commitment to creating a culture of belonging where all members of our diverse community feel included, heard, and respected. Please respect the communities where village centers will be built by offering neighborhood representatives a seat at the table along with city staff and developers to ensure their voices are heard, their needs are respected, and they are an integral part of the decision process. Thank you. I yield my time.
And as soon as I get myself back to Zoom somewhere. That was the final remote public speaker under oral communications.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close oral communications and move on to our consent calendar. Let me first announce that I will be pulling Item 1F. Let's go ahead and open the public comment on consent calendar items. Members of the public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Use the raised hand feature now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak. I will call on members of the public participating in person first. Then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards for consent calendar items. City Clerk, are there any remote speakers wishing to speak on the consent calendar item?
No, Mayor.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll take motions. Vice Mayor Dean.
Thank you. I move all items except 1F.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mellinger.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, and just for the record, Councilmember Mellinger seconded and not positive that Mike was on. First up on the roll call vote, Councilmember Cisneros, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton.
Yes.
Councilmember Mellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Sel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Yes.
Councilmember Srinivasan.
Yes.
The motion for consent calendar items 1A through 1E passes 7-0.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take Item 1F at this time. And so I had some several questions of staff and I don't know if other council members do before we go to the public. But first, you know, from, from declaring the state of emergency, I was wanting to first check as far as Mockingbird Lane is concerned. Have we done additional investigation of other, other outputs into Stevens Creek Trail or Stevens Creek from Sunnyvale?
Good evening, Mayor. Ramana Chinnakotla, Environmental Services Director. Yes, we have. We've actually looked at all the other outfalls. And all of them are actually in good condition. Three of the outfalls, we were not able to inspect because they're actually underwater. There's a lot of water flowing right now. But they seem to be in reasonably good condition. The embankment and the structure seems okay. So this is the only one that we really need to work on.
Okay. And since we're talking about Stevens Creek, you know, kind of leads to our recent decisions about Stevens Creek Trail and wondering, you know, for this section, and I guess Mr. Taylor's coming forward, thank you. For this section, you know, where that trail was planned to be, you know, was it supposed to be on the east side of the bank or the west side of the bank? Or the east bank or west bank as far as kind of going through that trail, going, the trail going next to the creek.
Yeah, Chip Taylor, Public Works Director. So the trail in that area is the Mountain View portion of the trail. So they're working on that. And so far, the trail is going to be on the freeway side. So it's going to be near the sound wall, between the sound wall and the creek. So it shouldn't be affected by the outfall on the other side.
Okay, that, that, so that's good. And, and this isn't our segment. This is Mountain View segment, correct? This is?
Yeah, we're working with them, but it is their segment. That's correct.
Okay. And then as far as funding in, and I know this, this, you know, the state of emergency gives us a potential funding access to FEMA. Do we have any idea? You know, the, the opportunity there or, you know, and I know we need to do additional work, at least according to the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. There's not certainty about getting reimbursement, but the step of declaring a state of emergency because of storm damage potentially makes us eligible. We want to use that opportunity to try and recover the cost of the permanent repairs.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was all of my questions. Council member Sal.
From the pictures that the city manager sent, it looks very deep and steep. So I was just wondering if in addition to yellow tape, would something like that prevents little kids from going near there? Would that be advisable or just thinking about?
Yeah. So as soon as we found out about it, we actually put some barricades out there and some caution tape. But then since then, we've actually put up a fence, a chain link fence. And so it's covering the whole area. So we kind of have a barrier and then we have the fence behind it. So it should be pretty protected.
Thank you. I see no other questions from council. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on item one F. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card to the city clerk or raise your digital hand or dial star nine on your telephone now to indicate that you wish to speak. I'll call on members of public participating in person first, and then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have no speaker cards. Is anyone in the room wanting to speak on this item? I see none. City clerk, do we have any remote participants interested?
No, mayor.
I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion. Vice Mayor Dean.
Thank you. I move item one F.
Thank you. The staff recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you. And council member Mellinger.
Second.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just want, council member Milton, comment or?
Yeah, I'll just say I'll be voting in favor of the motion. Since the item was pulled, I, I did not have any Monday eight AM questions on this particular item. I wanted to say this is typically where I think city staff shines and the city manager in particular, these sort of weird emergency situations. The decision to pull a trigger, so to say, on an emergency proclamation and protect Sunnyvale's interests, both for the duration of the emergency, but also to get us in line for potential emergency funding. I think is something where city staff does really well. So I wanted to say that since the item was pulled. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Milton. And yeah, and definitely, you know, I agree. This, this is important thing as far as getting potential funding for, for repair at this location. And, and thanks to staff, you know, I was out there over the weekend and seeing, you know, where things stood from barricades and, and appreciating the improvements that are going on at that location to make sure that, that from a safety standpoint, you know, our residents don't, don't, you know, don't get too close to the edge of the cliff. So, so from that standpoint, I appreciate that. And, and luckily, you know, hopefully we will get additional funding from FEMA to, to make this, to make this basically this embankment safe at some point in the near future. And, and I look forward to hearing back from, from staff on what the ultimate, you know, quick fixes will be and what, what additional measures conceivably it's a budget modification that we'll be looking at sometime soon. So with that, city clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, council member Milton, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Yes.
Council member Sal.
Yes.
Council member Srinivasan.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Council member Cisneros.
Yes.
Council member Mellinger.
Yes.
The motion for item one F, the staff recommendation carries seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to general business. Our first item is item twenty-three dash zero three zero eight. Award of a contract to Hazen and Sawyer for the Water Pollution Control Plant Master Plan Update and the Co-Generation Upgrade Design. Is there staff report?
There is. So Chip Taylor, Public Works Director. Hopefully this microphone is picking me up. It's kind of weird. I have to bend down a little bit. So this evening, we're going to be talking about the master plan update and the co-generation upgrade design. Initially, these two items weren't intended to be together. They were going to be separate projects. But because the co-generation facility is having some issues, we decided to bundle them together so we could get things done a little bit faster related to that. This evening, I'll give part of the presentation. Ramana from Environmental Services will give part of it and then it'll come back to me. Oh, thank you. All right. So just to orient everybody, this is a map of the Water Pollution Control Plant. As you can see down in the green area there, that's the actual plant itself. And then up to the top left, and this is all pointing north toward the bay there. Top left, where you see those ponds, those are two facilities that we currently use as part of the treatment facilities. Those eventually will go away as we start to do more with the plant, but currently those are utilized as part of the treatment. And then the location is also near the smart station. So I'm not sure. I know that there's a few new council members that may not have seen this map. So they're actually just to orient a little bit there. So to give you an update on the master plan and kind of tell you the whole process and how it's taken from two thousand six all the way until today. We'll go through that. So in two thousand six, they did a condition assessment. And that was done actually because the plant itself was just older infrastructure needed to be replaced. And so that was part of it. And then ultimately from that condition assessment, it moved into a strategic infrastructure plan. And that was peer reviewed and then ultimately came to a strategic planning workshop. And as part of that, it was recommended to do a master plan so we could plan for the future. The master plan was completed in twenty sixteen. And then after that, the project started. We're working on phases one and two with the primary facility and then the secondary facility, rehab, all those different pieces we're working on right now. So twenty sixteen master plan. So we identified key projects in there. That's what we're working on now. We estimated costs and those have changed unfortunately over time. And then it was recommended to be five phases. Phases one and two were clearly defined. Those are the ones that we're working on now. And then there were some uncertainty with three, four and five, because as things change, I'll show you in just a minute. Those may have to change and likely will have to change. So here's just a map of the clean water or the Water Pollution Control Plant again. North is still up in this particular diagram here and the, the smart station is just over to the right on this particular slide. So as you can see, we're working currently on the orange area. That's going to be the next part with the secondary process that we're working on. Right now, you don't see the actual primary. That's kind of the gray area that you see down at the bottom. That's the piece that we've already constructed and we're doing testing right now. So that's the piece that we hope to have in full operation here in the next few months. And then we'll start to work around. And you can see as you look through all the different pieces there, there's a lot of different pieces. We have to kind of work and move like a little jigsaw puzzle or as I've said before, kind of trying to repair the plane as we're continuing to fly it. So why do a master plan and why update it? So it's a living document as we talked about, things change and it's recommended to do it about every five to ten years. It kind of depends on regulations, depends, depending on how things have changed, then we might have to do it sooner or later, depending on that. So we have regulatory requirements. So we have new things that they add on about nutrients and different requirements that we have to actually treat the wastewater before it's discharged. So we have to work through those policy changes where the council may make a policy change that requires, you know, recycled water or something like that. And we want to add those pieces in there. We have aging infrastructure. That's another big component. That's part of this plant especially. We have increased growth. So a lot of our actual specific plans that have been approved and trying to make sure that we're accommodating for those. And then changing water quality. So as we have like low flush toilets, you might actually have more intensity in the water. Because you have less water, so you have to treat it a little bit differently. And then new technologies that come out. That's the big piece. We're actually using some new technologies as we go and we want to incorporate those. So master plan update driver. So when we did the master plan, we have five drivers that we wanted to make sure that we were working through. And then we led everything back to those drivers. So the five kind of pillars of drivers that we had are regulations that we talked about, condition, capacity, performance and policy. So we try to lead everything back to those five pieces. So master update, master plan update scope will evaluate all the strategic issues and kind of get everything that we know, get that together. We'll recommend those process improvements. A lot of technical memos. We'll go through all that. We'll plan support systems and site use. So I have to look at the site and how we're going to use everything. And then we'll have to lay everything out. So we'll actually lay everything out and get more detailed with it, get more cost and, and then scope information or schedule information related to that. So we can add that to the, to the actual master plan and update it completely. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ramana for a few slides.
For the record, I don't have a problem with the microphone. It's perfect for me. I also want to acknowledge Rohan Vikramanika. He's the pilot who's actually flying the plane. While we're working on it, he's the division manager for the wastewater plant. Slide. So the second portion of this project, in addition to the master plan update, we also have another piece which deals with the design of the co-generation facility. So the co-generation facility is the, is the portion of the facility that actually takes care of all the energy needs. We're able to produce about ninety percent of the electricity that the plant uses and all the, the heating needs that the plant needs using these co-generation engines. So these are two big generators that we use. We take the biogas that comes from the digesters and also from the closed landfill. We blend it with some of the PG and D natural gas and then we produce electricity using these engines. These engines were built in about nineteen ninety-eight or we installed in nineteen ninety-eight. So they're kind of reaching the end of their useful life. We've had quite a few frequent failures. We've had close to sixty to sixty-five shutdowns each year over the last few years. As a result of those, it obviously costs a lot of time and staff resources and also high repair costs. In addition to that, we've also had new ways of testing for emissions that came about over the last two years. As, as a result of that, we are not able to meet those emission requirements unless we do a very deep top end overhaul. Each of those overhauls cost about two hundred thousand dollars every time we do it and we have to do it every single year. Otherwise, we won't pass emissions. So and then to top it all of all this, every time you have a shutdown, you're not using your own power, your drawing power from PG and D. And so it costs, costing you a lot of money. And then all that the gas, the biogas, we have to flare it instead of actually using it to produce electricity. So as a result of all these, we decided we're proposing to fast track the design for this project. Originally, we were going to start the design after the master plan was completed. But because of all these issues, it just made sense to do it as part of the master plan update. So the general, the goals for this project are to increase the reliability of the renewable power generation, decrease the consumption of the PG and D gas. Right now, we're blending it, blending our biogas with PG and E gas because of impurities in the gas. So we don't have a good filtration cleaning system, which we will be doing as part of this new project. And then obviously we will also be bringing in food waste. Once the secondary treatment project is complete. So once that is done, we will need bigger engines to be able to produce more electricity. So that's the other piece, increasing the capacity. So the design scope, new engines, we will also be putting in the best available control technology to measure emissions and to control emissions as per the new Bay Area Air Quality Management District requirements. We will also have better safety of biogas handling and also treatment improvements. And then finally, the hot water loop improvements, which provides the heating for the digesters and also for all the facilities. So.
So I'll finish up with just a few more slides here. So we have here just basically two different projects that are actually part of the budget for this that make up the budget. And it was in the staff report there. So I just put the table up here. But we have about two point nine million dollars, almost three million for the master plan itself. And then with contingency, you can see the three point two, almost three point three. And then for the co-generation project, we have four point four for the actual design and with the contingency. So we have a total of all those eight point one four million dollars. And so those are budgeted funds. So we do have those available in those two projects. And so with closing, we are recommending the award of the master plan update and the co-gen design contract to Hazen and Sawyer and approve the ten percent design contingency for our consultant services. I'll leave this slide up here, but we do have myself, Ramana, Jennifer Ng, Tim Kirby also, Rohan and Allison Boyer and Aaron McGuire from our program management consultants online as well. So we got plenty of people to answer all your questions.
Thank you very much. And we have several questions from council. First up is council member Melton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein and Chip. I'm glad you brought the all-star team with you here for the clean water project. How long will this effort take?
What is the timeline for it? I think it was about two to three years is what I believe, but I'll look to see if somebody corrects me on that. While Jennifer is looking that up.
I'll, I'll move on. Can I talk to Mr. Chinnakotla for a second about co-generation? So Ramana, I appreciate what you were saying. And when I hear the term co-gen, I think of the food cycle mash because that's been just a huge project that Sunnyvale has been working on. What I think I heard you say is we're rehabilitating the current co-gen, which draws the natural gas from the closed landfill. And I think I heard you say something about anaerobic digest.
Digestor gas.
Can you, can you just tell me the sequence again of where the co-generatable gas is coming from today? And then how soon do we think we'll be able to pull in the mash from food cycle?
So right now, the co-generation happens from two sources of biogas. One is the biogas that's generated from the digesters through anaerobic digestion of the solids, the bio solids in the wastewater. And the other piece comes from the biogas that's generated from our closed landfill. It's usually, it's about forty percent comes from the digester gas, but thirty to thirty-five percent comes from the, the landfill gas and the remaining comes from the PG and E supplied gas. Once we bring in food waste, the food waste finally ends up in the digesters. And then you generate more biogas. So we expect to gen, generate about thirty percent more gas than you currently have between, between the two sources.
Excellent. I'm really excited about the possibility of using the food waste mash provided by our incredible residents under this program. Put it into the anaerobic digester, create more electricity and pay less to PG and E. How, how, what's sort of a timeline for that vision to turn into reality?
So the first piece is currently under construction, which is the secondary treatment and the solids handling facility. So that's going to be built by twenty-six, twenty-seven around that timeframe. So once that is there, then we can bring in food waste. And then in the meantime, we also are going to be doing the co-generation design and construction. So both of them should be done around the same time. So once both are done, we will also be able to get permits for accommodating food waste into the system. So I would say twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Okay. A couple of other questions here about the forthcoming master plan. So I know I've mentioned this before, but we've identified in some of our recent EIRs for some of our new land use plans, the possibility that we could be hitting max capacity at the Water Pollution Control Plant if everything gets built out to its maximum potential. And I've heard staff say, this is not a problem that's going to hit in the next year. Right? But we need to think about the next five years as these things build out. Right? But we need to think about the next five years as these things build out at whatever pace they'll be building out. So um, does it seem to you, Ramona, that the master plan update that we're working on will absolutely tackle the problem that we've identified in the environmental impact reports? Or said another way, I don't want to get to the point where somebody has to slam the emergency brakes on development in Moffett Park because we've hit a ceiling at the water pollution control plant. So what does all all look like to you?
Absolutely. The the master plan update is a big part of the master plan update is to take into account all the new growth that's going to come as part of all the other specific plans, also Lauren Station, Area Plan, uh Perry Park, um El Camino, um and Moffett. So all of these will be included in um the update in the master plan. So we have to finish the master plan update, identify the projects that you need to provide the capacity and then you have to build it. Right? So at some point, there might be a point where as you start building all these, um, you basically have to wait until the capacity comes online.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Love this, Ramona. This is all like hand in glove because we've got Trudy and team working very hard on all these land use master plans. You're working hard. Chip's working hard at the water pollution control plant and we'll get to the point where we understand what it will take to provide the capacity at the plant to accommodate the growth that's contemplated in the plans. That that's all wonderful and I'm looking forward to that. Um, let's keep going, Ramona, because you've heard me talk before about Valley Water and Advanced Water. Um, AWTP, Advanced Water Treatment Facility. So I have this dream that Sunnyvale can on our own accomplish a clean level of water similar to what Valley Water says they can do at their AWTP. And I know that California doesn't allow recycled water today to be used for potable purposes, like blending it in or using it for recharge ponds or whatever. That's sort of my dream. I would like Sunnyvale to get to that point. Well, topics like, you know, the AWTP ability um of the water pollution control plant to your mind be included in the forthcoming master plan?
Yeah, at a strategic level, yes. So we do, we are going to be looking at recycled water quality improvements. So that's part of the scope. Um, so that means, you know, being able to improve our existing water, recycled water quality to be able to allow for users like evaporative cooling, um indoor plumbing, things like that. Uh, in addition to that, we also included in in the scope um indirect portable reuse, which would be a groundwater recharge. So it, but it would be at a strategic level. Uh, it would basically look at things like uh for the demand that we have. Um, what would be the kind of process improvement that we would need, the technology that we would use? The the footprint that you would need. Um, and then the approx- the very high level cost estimates.
Yeah.
So it at least give us a blueprint of what it would take to get there.
Okay, that's that's really exciting. And obviously, we've had a wet winter. Um, so all the newspapers are telling us that the drought is over, but we all know it's just a matter of time, Ramona, until the next drought hits. This is California. Um, so I I really do have the strategic vision. If I think forward thirty years for Sunnyvale's future and growth and prosperity, um, having more of a control of our own destiny equals to my way of thinking, advanced water treatment facility, either as a standalone facility or integrated into the incredible um water pollution control plant that we're building. And I also just want to acknowledge, we have that study issue that we're working on, which is a redo of the recycled water master plan. So it seems to me there are multiple angles that we're tackling all of this at the same time.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, let's just talk about uh money and dollars for a second, Ramona. Um, so, thank you. Um, so uh the current uh master plan has some words, right, about the five phases and some very rough estimates about what each of the five phases would cost. And I think I saw in the slides here, Ramona, that um cost estimates for whatever these new phases will be as part of the um new master plan will also be included. And I think obviously that's important, just as important to my way of thinking. I think um for the sake of transparency, Sunnyvale needs to be able to tell our residents via the new master plan. Not only what we're going to spend in the future under the revised master plan, but what we've also spent on the clean water project from day zero up until that new revised master plan. So how do we get to the point in the master plan where we provide a table or a statement to our ratepayers and businesses that says this is what we spent so far? And this is what we're going to spend in the future estimate, A plus B equals total clean water project from day zero to the end of the project. How do we get to that?
I'm gonna let Chip answer that.
Ramon just wants a new plan. No, I mean, certainly we haven't figured out exactly how we'll display that, but we hear you loud and clear that, you know, showing what we've spent to date, which is pretty easy to show. And then what we're going to spend going forward or what we expect to spend going forward. I think that that's fairly easy. So we'll try to find a way to present that. And we can certainly massage that a little bit if we need to or include it somewhere. It wasn't intended to be like for the public to kind of just look at this document. It's gonna be a very technical document. Uh, but certainly we could, if we don't do it in the document perfectly, we can certainly show it another way and present it to the public.
Whatever you think is best in the current um master plan, Chip. I think I found all of that dollar information, like the executive summary. So it's sort of towards the front of the document rather than buried in the in the whole thing. And I'll I'll just get back to the the main thing is um, we ask a lot of our ratepayers in the city of Sunnyvale and we're going to be asking more and more in the future to fund what we want to do um at the water pollution control plant. So um I'm thinking the word comes to my mind is transparency. We really owe it from my thought process to tell them what we spent in the past and what we want to spend in the future. It's their money. Um, if you feel that um I need to um embed that in a motion, uh, you'll tell me or otherwise, if you think that you're just taking direction verbally and don't need a motion to include the sort of historical spending, um, I'll just assume it that way.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward to do that. So there's no problem. We can include that.
Very good. That's totally awesome. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Uh, next up is council member Sal.
Hi, um, it's very thorough what you've given us and presented. Thank you for all the work you've done with this. Um, in the presentation, uh, it mentions some uncertainty in phase three, four and five. What is that relate to and how are you addressing that uncertainty?
Yeah, certainly. So you know, as I talked about a lot of the drivers that we have um related to regulations and um various policy changes and what changes with the actual equipment itself as far as how it's aged, what's broken, what's not working. All of those things create that uncertainty. And one of the biggest ones is just regulations. They change on a regular basis. They add more and more components to it. So we have to then keep up with those components. Sometimes technology changes too, and we have to then keep up with that technology because another one's not. You know, they don't produce it anymore. So we have to use new technology. So all of those pieces make things that are further out much more difficult for us to predict because we just don't have control of those pieces like we do the other ones. However, we do know a lot of what's coming. We try to anticipate all that. We have a lot of experts that are in this field. They talk with a lot of the different agencies. They know what they're looking for. So we try to predict that as much as possible. We have the right people to do that. So that's how we try to reduce that risk.
Okay. And in the um documents you provided, it mentioned that um about sea level rise. So what would happen if the phase two and phase three sea level rise um uh mitigation was delayed? How would it impact this project in the uh water treatment?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, in the master plan, it's something we're certainly going to look at more in detail is to figure out what's what that impact might be. We do have a wall project as part of this whole thing to try to protect the plant to some degree. And so as we do the update, we'll look at whatever the new requirements are for protecting the plant and we'll try to incorporate those in. Certainly, we want to, sometimes these things get ahead of us, so we have to monitor that and maybe move things around. Just like the cogeneration project, we weren't expecting to do that now, but we moved it forward because we had an issue and so we were able to accommodate that.
Okay. So are you in touch with um the sea level rise, the the organizations that are um so that you can predict like where they are so you can?
I'll let Ramon talk about that, but we we do. I mean, we monitored that. We're engaged in all of those activities as well with different agencies.
Council member Sal, we are very closely engaged with Valley Water. Um, in fact, we are working on a feasibility study. We just got funding for phase three, which is our piece that that basically includes Sunnyvale's shoreline. So we'll be working with the US Corps of Engineers and Valley Water as a local partner in moving that uh feasibility study along. So and for us, the biggest way we can um protect our shoreline is through a regional effort because it doesn't really make sense to just build uh a levy just for our portion. It doesn't help. So it has to be done as a regional effort. So Valley Water is kind of the regional partner for us. So we are working with them. This is, it is going to be a long journey, but that's the best way to address sea level rise for our community.
Okay. And then um for this competitive bid, this contractor was chosen. And I just wondering if you, in the contract, it said they were the most experienced, but it, could you like elaborate more on why this consultant was chosen?
Well, I think, you know, it goes through a process to actually interview them and look at all the documents that they have and their previous work. And so based on the panel that we're looking at it, looking through all the different pieces, the presentation that they had, the documents that they had, uh, they were selected. They're they're very big in this industry and so they, we know that they have good experience related to it. So definitely, and a lot of the consultants are pretty good. It's just kind of which one's going to fit better for Sunnyvale.
Okay. And then my Monday morning questions, um, a lot of my questions that I um wrote were based on oversight and your risk mitigation and expertise to review this plan along the way. So I was just wondering if you could just, for the public, just like summarize like highlights of what you're most proud of in this plan in terms of oversight, risk mitigation and expertise to review it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's exactly what the plan is about, right? These are all experts that are doing this or reviewing it. So we have lots of different sub consultants that are working on it. They have very specific, um, you know, um, knowledge of certain areas. And so they wind up reviewing that. So they're reviewing it all on their end, writing those technical memos. They have a lot of experience in the field from other plants that they've worked on and things that have worked well and haven't gone as as well. And so we get all those documents, we review it. But then we also have our program management consultant that reviews it too, because they have lots of expertise in this field. So they're reviewing it as well as staff. And so we have multiple eyes on this, multiple people reviewing it. Sometimes they go through various iterations, lots of comments back, and then ultimately we get to a point where we're comfortable with the documents. So there's lots of people who are involved in this field and have been involved in this field that are reviewing and creating the document itself.
Yeah, I was like, I'm an engineer by profession. So I was impressed when I asked questions of this is in planning phase, will you have people that are experts in construction to also review it? And you said yes, because I'm used to like when things are thrown over the fence and the um different phases of groups don't, you know, get something and they don't expect it. And you know, there's rework and all that. So I was happy to see that. You do have people in the next phase reviewing it. So that was good. And then um my last question is that um in my Monday morning questions, you mentioned that a program management consultant would um be working with Sunnyvale to be a reviewer of the consulting firm. I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that uh program management consultant or how did you choose the firm and why did you choose them and why do you feel confident um in them advising Sunnyvale to oversee that consultant?
Yeah, so they've actually been with us on the project since the beginning. So they were selected a while ago. So we've been working with them for years, CDM Smith. And so um they have a lot of expertise in this field. They can draw upon a lot of the experience from various people within their group as well. Um, we have somebody on the line, Erin McGuire, who's part of that group. And so she helps to answer a lot of the questions and has been with this project pretty much since the beginning. So knows a lot of the details. So you have the historical knowledge as well as their technical knowledge that winds up working well with us. And we've worked well with them for years now, which has been fantastic.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say I'm so impressed with the work of Public Works to take on what looked like very complex issues and technical details and um to come up with a a bid that's um, I think it's a pretty cost effective bid for all that has to be accomplished. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also include environmental services. They've been a part of this as well and finance back there. He always gets missed and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Uh, next up is council member Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Um, really exciting news. When uh this comes to us, it's a change, but it's even another opportunity to see the progress we're we've made and the progress that we are going to be making really soon. And thank you to my colleagues for asking those deep technical questions. Really helped me um grow what we're talking about here. I just do ha- have a couple of others. Um, so pardon me, um, I I mentioned here that this uh that the congeneration engines were replacing those would lower our natural gas consumption, which is always a great thing. Now, how much cost savings are we looking at in having an updated model there?
Um, about thirty percent of her usage right now is from um PG and D supplied natural gas. So that would be savings, but the biggest savings is the electricity that we use when we don't run the engines. Um, every time the engines fail, um, we don't, we get hit with both usage charges, which is consumption charges, but also with demand charges. So and those are really, really expensive. So those are the big savings that we will actually see.
Wow, that that's really helpful, kind of getting the scope of of, you know, that was one point, you know, in a lot of slides, but that itself can really help us move forward on this is what I'm hearing. And of course, putting this in makes perfect sense to me in terms of efficiency, putting this in a master plan update, which we need in order to make sure that we're taking advantage of new technology, we're efficient, it's reliable, it's safe. Um, and dovetailing with that makes sense. But is there anything by putting this in as a priority, is there anything that would slow down as uh as a result of our um expediting this portion?
Um, I don't think so, because this project was actually going to be done just after the master plan update. Um, and Public Works, basically, there we look at their bandwidth in terms of managing projects. So um by combining these two, we are essentially, you know, using the same bandwidth to do both projects. Um, and you're actually moving the project that was a little bit um later ahead of time.
That's that that's awesome. Um, because as, you know, calling back to council members Melton's question about capacity and and timing and being able to match pace as we're growing as a city, we're meeting state obligations. Um, and we also need to address the housing crisis. So we're doing two things at once. And just something I thought of is when we hear uh items for housing development, to have just a slide or a couple bullet points on how our capacity you know, is with that, because I know it's a common question about residents saying, we do have the capacity for this and we we figured it out. I would love to hear that as we go on to help update us on the progress here in um relation to uh growth. Do you think that would make sense?
Yeah, it does. And we actually work very closely with um community development.
Yeah.
Um, as their master plans come come to fruition, um, we actually review them from the infrastructure perspective. And uh especially for Moffett Park, we've been very close. We've had very um deep conversations on how to address capacity needs uh for infrastructure.
Yeah, that makes total sense. And that's very responsible and exactly what you all should be doing. I just want to make sure that we highlight that that to the public that the city has considered this and uh it's it's been figured out from their side. So that eases some concerns there, I think. Um, and then, so you mentioned, I mean, having these engines be unreliable is causing a lot of problems. And as we talked about, it costs a lot of money. Um, does not have, does having unreliable congeneration e- engines open us up to lawsuit liability? Like, say, we have a contractor and it interferes with their work.
Um, we don't really have liability issues. It's more because if it doesn't run, we have a reliable source of power in PG and D. Um, and then we also have generators or diesel generators that can run portions of the plant. Um, if if we even lose PG and D power. So we don't really have any um issues from a liability perspective. Uh, unless something goes wrong and the engines cause damage to life and safety, but I don't think that's the case.
Okay, yeah, you mentioned there was some safety issues that this would increase the safety, but we're not seeing that as a big thing there. Because if that were the case, I would say, let's think about how to even get this up further. But I'm glad to hear that that's pretty much contained for now.
Yes, there are no immediate safety concerns.
Okay, that that's good. Um, and that that is all the questions I have, but thank you very much. I look forward to hearing my colleagues, but um great job. It's it's exciting to see the progress.
Thank you, council member. Uh, next up is council member Mellinger.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a few questions. Uh, first of all, I want to call out council member Melton's comments about transparency. I think that's a very good idea. And in the long run, what I would actually like to see, I know this is sort of an ongoing project on the IT side, is a dashboard for the everything to do with the water pollution control plant, because this is really a massive project. And having, you know, all of that, you know, having a dashboard would be useful both to council, I suspect to staff and also to members of the public to understand what's going on. council, I suspect to staff, and also to members of the public to understand what's going on. So moving on to some of the questions that I've got here. How much power does the current cogeneration plant generate when it's actually in working order?
About nine million units a year.
Units, thermal units?
Kilowatt hours.
Kilowatt hour, okay.
So nine million kilowatt hours a year.
And that's what percentage of the energy use of the plant?
If they're running all the time, then hundred percent.
Okay, so it actually fully covers?
Almost fully covers.
Okay. And so with the new cogeneration plant, are we expecting to have increased power capacity? Or is it primarily on increased reliability?
Increased power capacity. So we would basically take into account the additional food waste. So that will increase our power generation by another thirty percent. So we would include that in terms of when we design the cogeneration engines.
Okay, I'm guessing that that thirty percent is going to be used by the various upgrades we're envisioning for the plant and not sold back onto the grid or something.
That's true.
Okay. So, you know, from a climate perspective, you know, the biogas is something that is, am I right in saying that biogas is something that's generally worse to allow into the atmosphere than carbon dioxide?
Yeah, so it's, it's basically methane. And methane is about fifty times more dangerous than carbon dioxide. So this is a very, very sustainable practice.
So burning it to carbon dioxide is actually a very good thing. So I have been, I know it's somewhat experimental. You know, we've been reading about things like carbon capture technology at, you know, power generation facilities. Have we considered or will we be considering some sort of carbon capture technology? I know the technology is somewhat bleeding edge and may not be suitable, but I'm just curious if that's something we're looking into.
It's something that we will ask the, the master planners, the consultants to look at. They will basically bring us all technologies that are available. And then as through the analysis and review process, then we will come to a final selection of the technology.
Okay. And then let's just talk about the current state of the cogeneration plant today. How often is it breaking down?
So last year, we had about sixty, sixty plus shutdowns.
Six zero?
Six zero. We lost about thirteen hundred hours. Due to the shutdowns.
I'm just going to do some quick math on that, but that is. Okay, so that's, that's pretty dramatic. And, you know, in terms of the safety risk of the current plant, you know, would you say there's a, any sort of substantial risk of catastrophic failure with the existing cogeneration facility?
They could fail, but I don't think they present any safety concerns.
Okay. Well, I think that about does it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Next up is Councilmember Srini Bhason.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent job, everybody. I had a question on this diagram. The presentation, there is a pink line going on which is phase one. Can you bring up the presentation, please?
I think it's the, the plant rehab part, right? Yeah, it's slide number five.
Five. Is that the piping and all those?
Yeah, that's some of the piping goes to the ponds and whatnot. And so that's part of the rehabilitation project that we're working on. So some of those will be a part of that as it goes forward.
So I'm going to answer my question regarding where the biogas is coming from today. That is the landfill and then the biomass, the biomass from the
From the wastewater.
From the wastewater. And then in future, it will be put, put waste.
That's right.
And then regarding the efficiency of the new cogenerator engine, it will not only increase the efficiency, but also reduce the emission, it will meet the emission standards.
Yeah, and it will be much, you know, the emissions will be much better.
Okay, got it. And then I, I'm reading a book on grid and all those things. And then this being the critical services, we also, you mentioned this, that in addition to this cogenerator engine, you have PGND power. And then in case that fails, we have diesel generator.
Yes.
Right? Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, we have three.
We have to have a lot of redundancy in a critical facility like the wastewater plant.
Okay. The other question I had was, so with this cogenerator engine, will we have a redundant cogenerator engines or?
Yeah, so we will actually have likely, you know, yes, there will be redundancy.
Okay, got it. And then the backups will be still there, but then this cogenerator engines itself will be.
Yeah, so the current facility has the space to have three engines.
Okay, got it.
So it's something that we can add, you know, have some redundancy because of that.
Okay. And then do we have storage for biogas as such? Or what happens if we produce more biogas than what the power requirement is?
So we have a flare. So we always flare the biogas, the, the extra gas. But our goal is to not do that. So that's the reason why we need to have enough capacity. So the biogas is actually produced in the digesters. So it's stored there. But, you know, there's landfill gas that's coming out pretty much constantly. So we have to be running the engines to be able to use the biogas. If we can't, for some reason, for example, if the cogeneration engines are shut down, the only option is to flare the landfill gas. Otherwise it'd build up in a too much pressure.
Yeah, the pressure will be built up, right? And then I echo Councilmember Melton's idea, we need transparency. That was my question on the cost and then what we have spent so far. What is the useful life of these plants, cogenerator engines like?
So these existing ones, we installed them in nineteen ninety-eight. So we're basically around twenty-five years. By the time we actually build the new ones, it'll be thirty years. So about twenty-five to thirty years is, is kind of the useful life of engines.
So what happens if the standards change or how do we, is this modular so that we can change?
So regulations typically are not backward facing. So that means if new regulations come in, like new permitting, new air quality standards or emission standards come in, whenever we replace these engines, that's when those are applicable.
Okay.
So they would wait until we replace them before they make us do the new requirements.
Thank you very much. And then I really appreciate all the hard work. Like you and then Chip said, it's like fixing the plane as you are flying, right? And then you can't have any failure, otherwise you will fall down or all this and great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before I go to my questions, I'll go to Councilmember Mellinger, who might have finished his. I assumed as much.
I just ran some quick numbers of the thirteen hundred hours amounts to a fifteen percent downtime. And if we're assuming, you know, that's off of the nine million kilowatt hours we're burning one point three million kilowatt hours because of that, which is frankly, a little alarming to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member. So, so first I just want to thank, you know, staff for the presentation. And, and bringing this back to us for, for and, and from a transparency standpoint, you know, I, I appreciate what Councilmember Melton said. And especially what Councilmember Mellinger said as far as kind of converting this to the dashboard. There's the difference of, and the difference of what we expected, what the inflation costs were for kind of the different phases up to this point. One of my questions is how is, how are repairs managed? And I know earlier this year, we, we budgeted for, let's say, repairs for the next few years. And gave direction, gave, gave approval from that standpoint. How is that tracked from an overall project standpoint? Currently, and then now that we have kind of what we did with the, with the decision that we made earlier this year, tracking repairs to try to keep the aging equipment going?
So we have three or four projects and they're reflected in the project's budget. So we, we call them, you know, there's, there's a project for a bucket, basically for primary. You know, the primary portion of the facility and then for the secondary portion and then the tertiary portion and then the solids portion. So we have all these, you know, four, five buckets. There's one for facilities. So when, and these are huge buckets, and we usually have a million or so in each of them. And we, as we see repairs that need to happen, we use those pockets. Typically, when we do projects budget, we have an idea of what upcoming repairs are. And we either ask for more money if we need to augment that or tell the city manager what we would be spending that money on. So it goes through a review process and any money that's left over gets carried over. If you don't spend it, it's gets carried over to the, the next, next year. So those are the buckets we use for repairs that come up while all these other projects are going on.
So the repairs that we approved earlier this year, would that cover specifically the cogen generation or is that more generic? I'm just trying to remember.
The, the, are you referring to the existing plant rehab project? So that covers the, the tertiary facilities, which are the filters and some, some of the facility work. It, and we, with the new, and some of the secondary facility also, which is basically the pond system and, and some of the fixed growth reactors and stuff like that. The biggest portion of that existing plant rehab is electrical work. The electrical work is everywhere in the facility and most of it is gone. It's basically in conduits and water gets through them. And as you know, we've had many failures because of that. So that is the biggest component of that existing plant rehab project. And then also the control systems that go with it. Those would probably say about seventy percent of the project cost.
Wow, okay. And, and so I, I appreciate that, you know, it's like this is that the kind of calling out the issues and especially as, you know, as you said before, kind of the cogen, how many hours, how many days this is down, you know, keeping, keeping this aging plant, you know, in operation is, is, you know, a feat as far as trying to, trying to rebuild those critical sections, those prioritized sections. I appreciate that. There was question about sea level rise and I, and, and I appreciate, you know, what you're doing, you know. So there's lots of advocacy that I've been doing in the background with the Army Corps and Valley Water, you know. Thank you for that continued negotiation. You know, Councilmember Sal was asking. It's, it has been an ongoing effort and I'm happy to hear that we're finally moving forward with phase three study. So we'll see how quickly that, that actually takes place, but at least, at least it's been kind of given the go ahead. And, you know, as far as advocacy, you know, we, we've been also looking at, you know, trying to get the cogen, the cog generators themselves, part of that funding, you know, from, from a state standpoint, from a federal standpoint. You know, these, these projects are exactly what federal funds, state funds are trying to do. Trying to make, you know, trying to meet our greenhouse gas goals, trying to basically utilize a wasted resource, if you talk about that. And then especially as we look at capacity and increased capacity over food cycle as, you know, as our residents are doing the right thing. And as we continue to expand that program, utilizing that resource as best we can is, is really important. As far as that's all my questions for now. I, I just want to say, I appreciate, you know, where we're, where we're going, you know, it's like, whether or not we could get our potable water to, you know, the, 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 basically the recharge ponds is an ongoing discussion, whether or not we'll ever meet Valley Water's timing. And especially now that there's so much additional water, at least this year, their priority to, to focus on other things will probably change. But, but I appreciate that ongoing discussion that staff is having.
And that channel is always open.
Yes.
We keep that open. So we are very willing to talk to them whenever they do want to engage with us.
Right. And, and if we can, you know, and it's all timing to a certain degree and, you know, moving forward with this master plan, I do think is critical. You know, and, and bringing forward that, you know, the, the new plan as far as getting phase three in, in progress is, is exactly that. As we, as we move forward, as we're seeing, you know, with all the projects right now, the cost of inflation and wages, you know, the cost because of inflation, you know, supply chain, wages just keeps increasing. So the faster we move on that, the better it is for the city. So thank you for all that you're doing. Yes.
I just wanted to close the loop with one question from Councilmember Melton related to the timeline. So it is approximately three years, maybe just a little bit less than three years for the master plan.
Oh, good. Thank you for that. I see no other questions from council. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Members of public wishing to address council, please out, please fill out a speaker card if you're in person. Or raise your digital hand or dial star nine in your telephone now if you wish to address city council. I will call members of the public participating in person first. And then the city clerk will ask remote participants to unmute your microphone when it's your turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I see one speaker card for this. Steve, for this item. So I have one speaker in the room. Steve, go ahead and come to the lectern. Thank you.
Very interesting to hear about the cogeneration facilities of theirs. Something that was not in the discussion. And let's put this in perspective. I generate about eighty-five percent of my electricity year, per year. And I had to deal with a return on investment. I also have backup power generation that I ran for about fifteen hours total last three weeks when PGND shut down. The cogeneration here to convert the biogas and something less toxic, I think is very, very good. The technology that's being used is essentially converted diesel engines right now. And running the biogas. Have we looked into, and this is something to ask your, your staff people, have we looked into fuel cell technology? For example, Bloom Technologies is in Sunnyvale. They make a catalyst fuel cell system that converts many different types of sources, natural gas, biogas, some other things. I don't know exactly what the exhaust is out, but it is very hot. Coming out of there, that's one thing people are concerned in small environment, but you're by the bay. What concerned me in the presentation by the staff is that it sounds like we have a lot of maintenance on this. My maintenance costs are about one hundred dollars a year on my systems, both my, my main generation system, solar powered, and also my backup generation system, about a hundred dollars a year. It sounds like proportionally. There's a lot of costs to keep this running. So I'd enjoy you asking for looking into this. You know, is there some, some facilities such as fuel cell generation that requires less maintenance that can be done for this kind of stuff, rather than the mechanical parts of it? In there, I, I think it's, it's great to convert the gas, but what's being done sounds like the return investment. I, I don't know. Ask that question. What is the return on any investment to, to put in two or three new engines? And what is the maintenance cost per year? And how does that roll out in a twenty-year timeframe? Be interesting to hear that answer. And then maybe also have them talk to Bloom Energy that is in town.
Thank you. That was my last speaker card in person. City clerk, do we have any remote participants?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for additional questions or motion. First up, Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I'm ready with a motion.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I move alternative one.
And vice mayor Dean?
I second.
And actually, let me, before you go to your motion, let me, let me ask a quick question to staff. So kind of going with what, what, what the resident was asking. And I know there's a, there's kind of a difference between maintenance and a lot of what we were talking about, maintenance and repair on the existing systems. Maintenance on the, the existing on, on the new systems is minimal, correct? You know, this is why we're upgrading.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the older systems, that's why we're replacing them. You get more and more maintenance. And so you get to a point where just like an old car, you have to replace it at some point. And so that's what we're intending to do with this. It is scoped for, you know, an engine at this point to do that. And that's the design. We will kind of validate that, but we weren't intending to go toward a fuel cell at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm just going to also add that we did look at in the, in the old master.
I'm just going to also add that we did look at in the, in the old master plan or the current master plan. We did look at micro turbines and fuel cells. And this was the best option at the time.
Okay.
So I'm, we'll validate that. We think this is still going to be the most cost effective option.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Melton, to your motion.
Thank you. To the motion first, thank you to Vice Mayor Dean for the second. So Ramana and Chip, the answer is yes, go now. Awesome. Just keep up the great work on this really complicated project. It's been said a hundred times that this is the most expensive public works project in the history of the city of Sunnyvale. And it shows every time I think about this project or look at this project, what I see are expert staff working with expert consultants, expert project managers and expert builders getting the thing done. So I'd like to see that continuing to go. A couple of thoughts. I've asked in the past for annual updates to the city council and staff has been delivering that both in the forms of study sessions. And I think that needs to keep going, but also these sort of recurring check-ins via RTCs that we're talking about. I think that's very important for council to be kept apprised and we're doing a great job of that. I'm intrigued by Councilmember Mellinger's thoughts about a dashboard and whether that happens in RTCs or study sessions with staff or something different. I'll, I'll let staff roll with that. But I really appreciate the support from my colleagues about the notion of financial transparency. So I, I don't feel like I need to belabor that point. But I'll say that my tally of the estimated costs that were published with the original master plan, I think I added that up to like $800 million over the course of three plus decades. And then it kind of grew just via inflation and bidding to $850 million. And now when I talk to residents about the clean water project, I'm just saying $1.2 billion is sort of my estimate of, you know, where this will all end up. So I'll be interested in validating that assessment when we tally up what we've actually spent and what we project to spend in the, in the forthcoming master plan. I think the mayor had a good point. You know, it can be really hard to tell when we've spent money at the water pollution control plant. And I had this argument with Deanna all the time. So this is how long I've been thinking about this, right? When we spend money at the plant, are we spending it to provide maintenance to a thing that's already there? Or is it classified as the clean water project and building new things? I'm sure staff will figure all of that out when we try to tally up the whole question about what's been spent. Great job on the code gen discussion and the master plan. Let's keep this going. Critical for the future development of the city to have the capacity. And like I said before, I'll just put in another pitch Ramona for AWTP, high quality recycled water. And when the state of California says that we can start blending recycled, highly purified recycled water into the potable water supply or into groundwater recharge, we Sunnyvale need to be ready as an agency without having to depend on Valley Water. That's my opinion. And I'm looking forward to seeing where the master plan ends up in that regard. And city manager, I just wanted to say, whenever it is that you drop the forthcoming recommended budget, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to turn to the project page for the clean water center. And I'm going to see if we were able to put that in funded status or what that will all be. So I'm looking forward to your decision on that, since we're talking about the master plan. Thank you. And please vote yes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Sal.
I wanted to say that this is so important when you read about the details of what you're trying to achieve with this plant, trying to make it so it doesn't, no longer has aging infrastructure that you keep up with the regulatory requirements. And we're going to have increasing population. So you have to take care of that. And currently there's 12 million gallons of water per day. It's just astronomical what you have to achieve with this project. So I will be supporting it because of the, of all that you've done to make sure that all the experts are involved, that you went through this competitive bid and that you're utilizing all the expertise of Sunnyvale, working multi departments, working on this rather than one department working on it. And then, you know, trying to, you know, and reinvent the wheel. But I think that's, and also working with the long-term program management consultant that you've been working with for many years. So every time, all that I've heard today and all I've read from the documents you provided, give me more and more confidence on this very complex project that you will be able to deliver. So I wanted to thank you for your work and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this motion also. But before that, for me, this is extremely critical piece. I have read quite a bit about how other cities have failed due to power failure. They were in really, really natural disaster. And then the power plant failure and all those things. So this is a very, very critical piece. Having said that, I would also urge you to look into fuel cell because 25 years is a long period of time. Whether it's a, whenever adding new capacity, obviously we, our demand will increase. Our supply of bio gases will increase as we are bringing in more food cycling programs and other things. So I would urge you to look into other newer technology. Obviously in 25 years, newer thing, newer ways of doing things will come up, newer technologies. So with that, I also, as Councilmember Sal said, this is a complex engineering problem. Thanks a lot for taking on this and then completing this so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I'll be enthusiastically supporting this motion. Great work to our hardworking city staff on putting together such a great proposal. You know, I'm especially enthusiastic about the new code generation plant, the environmental benefits, the economic benefits that that's going to give the city. The reliability benefits. This is a fantastic project and, you know, it's just one small piece and, you know, there's much bigger redesign. And I know that over the next two, four, 10 years, we're going to be hearing a lot more about the water pollution control plant. But this is a fantastic step forward. So I will be enthusiastically supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Dean.
There we go. Thank you. And I agree with everything that my colleagues have said. I don't think I need to mention why this is such an important project. It's very clear. The one thing that I did want to mention, which is why I raised my hand, is another reason that I'm excited to support this motion that we didn't really get to discuss is at the end of the day, the main thing that this motion is doing is allocating the funding as well. Determining which contract, sorry, not allocating the funding, but determining which contract we're going with and at what amount. And so I just also want to highlight that I think staff has done a really good job of shifting through the different proposals that came in, finding the right contractor and finding it and negotiating the amount down to one that I think is in the best interest of the city and following the right model of putting that contingency in place. Because that contingency is so important when it comes to capital infrastructure projects especially. So for all the reasons my colleagues mentioned and those, I'm excited to support the motion.
Thank you. And I'll be supporting this motion. You know, definitely this update to the master plan, I do think is critical. You know, it will take a while before it gets done. But, but in the overall picture, and this is a question of, of how often it needs to be updated, five to 10 years? Whether or not it's seven years, I think is when we're now kicking off the next update. Whether or not it should be a little bit sooner, especially looking at costs. I think, you know, especially we, we look at inflation. We look at some of the things that we've dealt with over the last few years. And that's kind of affected a larger portion of this project from the long-term standpoint. So, so whether or not it's every five years as opposed to seven years, I'll let staff, you know, think on that a little bit. But, but to me, you know, updating the code generation, making, moving that forward is critical. You know, it, it is, you know, looking at the downtime, looking at the repairs that we've had. But also what we're trying to do with food, the food cycle program, trying to basically keep, you know, that food out of the landfill and, and making sure that we're, you know, when you're starting to look at costs, the more power we generate sooner, the, the more we save for the overall project. So looking at that income stream, looking at that money that we're not having to pay PG&E is an important part of this process. And it's like, we don't want the diesel fuel generator, diesel generators. We don't want, you know, the, the more we can immediately do code generation, the better off everyone is. And, you know, whether or not we have those bad flare that we actually have to release methane or burn methane, that's not what we're wanting to do. You know, we're, we're, you know, we're in our new city hall, that, that icon to sustainability. And, and, you know, looking at what we're trying to do with a wastewater treatment plan, having the for, the, the, you know, the foresight to kick off this program before things were completely falling apart. But, but understanding that that big investment is critical to the long-term viability and functioning of our city is something that, that was, you know, critical for, for council to make a priority. And keeping this moving forward is, you know, I, I applaud everything that staff is doing to make sure that this moves forward. And yes, it's, it's keeping the plane running while we're rebuilding it. But it's also, you know, deciding that we want to prioritize or de-emphasize certain areas at the plant as we're going through. And so, so thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you to, you know, city, the city, you know, leadership and all the city staff that have been working on that. So I'm happy to, to support this, you know? Going faster to save us money is, is a key thing here as we look forward to, to additional costs and the time that it takes to get done is, is only, you know, only makes it worse for the city and our taxpayer. So thank you for what you're doing. With that, city clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
First up, Councilmember Mellinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Cisneros.
Yes.
Councilmember Melton.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dean.
An electrified yes.
Councilmember Sal.
Yes.
Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Yes.
The motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. And our last item is item 23 dash zero four nine three. Consider reinstating the pilot of the process for city council colleague memorandums to propose new agenda items previously included in council policy seven dot three dot 19. Is there a staff report?
A quick point of order. Can I suggest a recess?
Yes, if, if council wants a recess, let's go ahead and do a six minute recess and come back at eight 50. Thank you. Thank you. Let's go ahead and reconvene. Uh, and take item twenty-two dash zero four nine three, consider reinstating the pilot of a process for city council colleague memorandums to propose new agenda items previously in included in council policy seven dot three dot nineteen. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor and council members, this is David Carnahan, the City Clerk. And so back in twenty twenty-one, there was a study issue OCM twenty-one oh three that was looking at uh, creating a a process, a formal process for city council colleagues memorandums. And it included two concepts. One would be council members adding items to a future agenda, and the other would be council members commenting on already agendized items. Uh, following a couple of study sessions and public hearings uh, in January of twenty twenty-two, council added language to this council policy uh, as a pilot, allowing council members to add agenda items to upcoming council agendas. It did require multiple council members. And it was set to automatically sunset January first of this year. However, on December sixth of last year, council considered this and removed the language from the policy. Uh, there was one instance in July of twenty twenty-two where several council members intended to utilize this process. Um, however, instead of submitting their intended colleagues memo to the city manager, it went to the mayor. So the process effectively, you know, was almost used once in that pilot last year. And then since we have several new council members, there was a request from the mayor to bring this topic back to see if there was interest in an additional pilot or something similar. We have several alternatives. Alternative one would be reinstating the pilot process for uh, you know, some either time period or similar to last time, we also council provided direction uh, for a check-in at a certain point in the future, X number of months. Alternative two would be adding a permanent process and three is other direction is provided, staff provides, makes no recommendation. Um, and this report is presented for council's consideration and direction. This concludes the staff report.
Thank you very much. And let me just start off before we get to council questions. I just wanted to talk about, you know, uh, one of the one of the new council members came to me and talked to me about the possibility of utilizing memorandum. And for me, this is a potential toolkit, you know, it wasn't used to the best um, effect last year. That being said, you know, from my standpoint, it's it's for me, it's working with all of our council members, figuring out, you know, what we, what direction we want to go. You know, all within, of course, the Brown Act. Uh, but but, you know, ultimately, I thought it was important and especially looking at uh, our agenda tonight, I thought it was actually a something, something that we could add without staying too late, as far as that's concerned. So so I thought it was a good addition in talking to the city manager for for adding it to tonight's agenda. Um, and I appreciate staff for for doing the RTC and and having, let's having the discussion tonight. So with that, uh, first up is Vice Mayor Dean.
Thank you. And I will say I uh, will second the idea of not staying too late while talking about it. So I appreciated the mayor mentioning that. Um, I I guess just to go into my line of questioning and thank you to City Clerk for the presentation and for putting this together. Obviously, I think we all recall when a council member Spitalary sent uh, the memorandum and sort of what came out of that and sort of the lessons that we learned from it. Um, is there, I, my question is two-part. And so one is a little bit more general. Is there anything that staff thinks we can do to put guardrails in place to protect us from, you know, a mistake like that happening again? Um, and then the second thing is to go a little bit into it, just an idea I'd like to throw out to see what staff's thinking on it would be. And I know typically I try not to get too ingrained into the operations of it. Uh, but you know, something as simple as maybe even making a Google form where us from up here, if we wanted to submit it, we could just put it into a Google form bypass having to email it, or that way no one accidentally CCs somebody they shouldn't or replies all when they should reply all, because I know that's, that's sometimes where the the friction can happen. So I'd love to hear staff's thoughts on on those concepts.
I mean, it would be possible for staff to come up with some sort of a form. Uh, I think perhaps if council was to re-add the language, uh, the language could more clearly outline the process, or perhaps it could be bulleted, sort of this is the exact process and making sure that um, it's clear to all council members that the process is it gets sent to staff and not to other council members or the mayor. Um, it, something else council members could potentially consider is waiting to share it with the public, uh, once it's been published on an agenda. I think another one of the concerns that happened last time around is uh, the memo was shared with the mayor and then also shared with various community groups, which were excited by the topic and then shared it further, uh, which led to, you know, all of the council members, my apologies, uh, getting access to and reading it prior to it being on council's agenda. So I think part of it is just making sure whatever policy is in place, uh, that it's followed.
Okay, thank you. And I I appreciate you mentioning that last point, too, because I guess that is something that doing it via just one form, that's where it submits, also precludes it from sending it around to multiple places. Uh, I, you know, I'm I'll mention a little bit of my thinking, because I have a feeling that there's going to be more of a discussion on the dais, but uh, last year, I know we had discussed it near the end. Originally, I was okay with sunsetting it. And then I remembered one of our council X at the time, now council member and council colleague, I'm about to say, uh, mentioned, well, hey, I would like the opportunity to do it. And that that was enough to change my thinking to at least say, all right, let's continue to at least give the new colleagues a chance if they want to take advantage of it. So my thinking is still the same. I think if we included some kind of language to the effect of what we just talked about, it prevents us from making any of those same outcomes as last time it was tried to be used. Uh, and I'm okay with giving my colleagues that opportunity. So that's, that's where I'm at. And I'd love to hear from the public and from my colleagues on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, next up is Councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just a couple of quick questions. So is, uh, what is the fiscal impact of this?
I think it would be, uh, generally negligible if if you all started submitting sixteen memos every week, it would have an impact if it's just several throughout the year. I think it would be able to be handled within our regular duties.
Okay, okay, that's so good to know, just because when we're thinking about this pilot, um, staff time's important to me if something's not been utilized correctly yet. And and I'll just say that, um, that error was made, you know, in good faith, not, um, maliciously whatsoever and in intent to break the rules. And because of it, I think that we've all learned, have taken lessons learned from it, and that it won't repeat. And I think that's valuable. Uh, my question about guardrails was asked and answered, and I'd add in my um, two cents about that, thinking that it should both be outlined very clearly um, in the language, easy for us to refer to if we wish to use that, and having a form to make things extra crystal clear. Um, if that's negligible staff time, I would love to see that. I think you'd make it um, because you want to make it usable, right? If you aren't able to clearly see how you're going to do it, it's going to be harder to use. And I already have a few ideas on some topics that will come to port council where this would be a very helpful tool for me, and I would like to give it a shot. Um, and that so far is just all I have right now. I look forward to hearing my colleagues uh, comments, questions on it, and then after public comment to think about what we want to do.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Sal.
Um, I was just wondering how this would work. Would it, um, like, would a colleague's memo be like, you know, up to three colleagues would put together a memo, and then that would be on agenda? Is that how like it would be seen? And and how is that not serial communication? Because it's happening outside of meeting and then and then the three colleague memo would, uh, be presented outside of meeting to the whole council. I was wondering.
Well, so the the intent of at least the previous pilot was that up to three council members could could discuss and draft a colleague's memo, but that they would not share with other council members prior to it being on an agenda. So the council members would draft their memo. They would submit it to staff, staff would put it on an upcoming council agenda. And when that agenda is published for both council and the public, that's when the quorum of council would uh, be aware of it and be able to read it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, for the record, I was the one who actually asked that this be brought back. Um, and so a couple of questions. Um, one, what was the reasoning for requiring a group of council members? So a lone council member cannot send a colleague's memo under this policy as written?
Um, I think the, you know, it was council's decision to have it be require more than one person. Uh, there are a lot of things under council's jurisdiction, and you all have a lot of interest in a lot of different things. Uh, I think if each one of you had an idea and you wanted to have staff work on a staff report and bring it back, and then the public's going to participate in the process and council's going to deliberate. Uh, there's potential to kind of spiral agenda management a little bit out of control. Uh, and then the the voters included in the charter provisions for the city manager to manage council's agenda. And then through council policy, that's grown to include uh, the mayor having the ability and then a quorum of council being able to make a motion to agendize something.
Excellent. That's very helpful. And do you recall uh, the rationale for only moving forward with it as a means to agendize items and not to comment on existing items?
Um, so a lot of the council discussion on that topic related to council members making sure that they were keeping an open mind and appearing to keep an open mind in advance of public hearings and appearing public comment. And there was some concern raised that if council members are saying, here's how I think about this, this is what you should all do. Uh, depending on how things are worded, that could have Brown Act questionable questionable challenges, but then also uh, sort of the longstanding Sunnyvale way of of ma- you know, making sure that all of you are maintaining an open mind on every topic before you hear a public comment. Uh, it can be a little more challenging to to feel like you've created, you know, kept an open mind, but if you've also written a memo asking your colleagues to, you know, vote a certain way or, um, things like that.
Of course. I'm just going to say, um, I do believe that this is a very valuable and useful tool. Um, I do have interest in the use of colleagues' memos on existing agenda items, so long as the provision is that they are for to provide analysis and not advocacy. And obviously, yes, analysis can be shaded. I don't think that's something to discuss tonight, but it is something I might noodle on. And if this policy is reestablished, I might send in a colleague's memo about it. Um, and with that, I think that does it for my questions. Thank you.
If I could, um, Mr. Mayor, one, one other item we discussed, uh, distinguishing between items on the agenda versus futures was the experience that San Jose had had, and there was a lawsuit in which three colleagues had, um, or three council members had drafted it, but they shared it with another council member, and then they got sued. And part of the settlement was they added something on the bottom saying that they had not, um, on all of their colleagues' memos, saying that no more than a, a quorum had not participated or discussed this. And it's, it, it, it becomes a little bit more challenging and and the potential for an innocent mistake or even unlikely in Sunnyvale, but in other cities for potentially intentional mistakes. And and then you have a quorum, and all of a sudden, you've, you've got an item that's been contaminated. And if it's important, you can't act on it.
Anything else, Councilmember? Nope, that does it for me. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Srinivasan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I like to have a tool like this. Uh, and then I also like the guardrail of having at least minimum three council members without violating the Brown Act to write a memo. Uh, that way we don't have too many issues on the agenda. Uh, that will be disaster. Uh, but overall, I think it's a useful tool where, uh, we can reflect the residents' uh, idea and then put it on the agenda. That's my, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Klein. Um, so I I recall, um, this conversation um, from last year. And Mr. Carnahan, thank you for your, um, rec- you, you were remembering things that I didn't remember from the previous conversations. So I'm really, I'm really grateful for that. Here's here's one thing I remember. Our former colleague, Councilmember Hendricks, to my recollection, kept asking the question of what problem is it that we're trying to solve with this? And I, I think I still have the same question right now. I I might like to ask in the spirit of friendship, because I I've been listening to my colleagues here, and I heard, um, Councilmember Cisneros mentioned the possibility that she has some ideas in mind where this would be a useful tool. So I don't want to put the council member on the spot, but I, I, for one, would find it really helpful to try and get to the bottom of what problem is it that we're trying to solve with this process? So I'll, I'll put that out there. Um, and there are a couple of, um, things that I wanted to mention. Um, I remember, um, it was Councilmember Fong who originally brought this concept to the forefront and um, I heard him say, um, you know, San Jose, something, 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 we do this in San Jose, because Mason was working for a San Jose council member at the time. Right? And this is a great process and I, I, I looked at some of those San Jose memos, and I know we have a colleague here on the dais who now works for the city of San Jose. Um, but I found myself concluding the San Jose process was not all that it was cracked up to be. I'll put it that way. Um, and Mr. Carnahan, I wanted to clarify, because we're talking about, um, on the agenda, that this process would put something on the agenda. And I'd like to to clarify um, my recollection of the process we used last year. A colleague's memo would be written, and then it would be placed on the agenda. Where would it have been placed as an action item or somewhere else on the agenda?
I don't know if council really discussed that, and the, or you may have discussed it, but the policy doesn't particularly say, oh, yes, there we go. So it would be uh, they would be completed colleagues' memos would be included under non-agenda items and comments. Um, so that when council members get to that part of the meeting, uh, you have more background behind ideas that you're proposing. Uh, the typical practice is once you all get to non-agenda items and comments for council, council, a council member will, you know, propose, make a motion to agendize something in the future. If it gets a second, uh, council votes and enough the majority supports it, it gets added to a future agenda. Um, this process was to really create a memo that would support why you would propose that item for a future agenda item. So it isn't necessarily that council members would write an entire RTC and add all the attachments and give all that research and background in advance of submitting it. But more that you would have an idea that you would otherwise have articulated during non-agenda items and comments. And you'd have more of that kind of built out in the memo.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. And that's, that's my recollection of the, of the conversation. I, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I think one of the things that Mason was trying to accomplish was a route to put things on an agenda as a public hearing general business item, uh, which now happens from the city manager. All right, that right is established in the charter. And then, as you mentioned, the mayor by our council policy has the right, just as he did with this item, to put things directly on the agenda. Or four council members can vote to put something under general business on the agenda, right? And I think Mason, I got the feeling he was trying to search for a fourth avenue to do that. And I really struggled with that concept. So I, I wanted to be clear, um, when we say agendize something, what we're talking about is agendizing it under non-agenda items and comments or information-only items. And so thank you for that, for that clarification. Um, and then the final thought that I just wanted to share, um, the whole concept of um, more than one person is required. So either two or three people are required to create one of these memos. We have a similar process, which is our call for review process. Um, that's if a decision is made by the planning commission, the city council can call their decision for review by the city council. Um, and the process that we established, um, to keep one council member from calling all decisions of the planning commission to city council and bogging things down is that it would take two council members to call something for review. So that's a practical example of um, where council itself has instituted, you know, at least two council members getting together to do something. I, I would love to hear any sort of practical examples from my colleagues of uh, a problem that could be solved or a benefit that could be derived from this, um, potential process. I, I think that would be very helpful for me to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And before we go to the next question, let me, let me answer a little bit of that. And and I appreciate what the City Clerk said as far as you know, what, making this an info-only item, you know, one of the, one of the issues and, you know, I've had, I had multiple discussions with Councilmember Fong when, when this was initially proposed. And, uh, at that point, you know, And, uh, at that point, you know, I wasn't mayor, I think, when we, when he first, when we first talked about it. Uh, as mayor, I have a lot more discussions with the city manager conceivably on what this is. But at a certain point, defining it and then letting city staff go. Um, and I think ultimately what this, what this really is, is to better define. What the council would be voting on for as a quorum. Uh, to put something on a future agenda, you know, I think sometimes there is a little, um, either miscommunication. Or what was requested, uh, hasn't been fully flushed out from the one sentence that's given to city staff. Uh, giving to the city manager, if, if something was proposed, proposed during the non-agenda items and comments. Um, I do think that that's really one of the things that this memo can, can really help out with. And, and as opposed to what, um, council member Srini Vasan said, it doesn't have to be three, it could just be two. Uh, one of the things that we've done from a council standpoint, and, and that's one, one of the, that barrier for that memorandum was, was put in place as two. Is, you know, it's, it's making sure that whether or not it's calling up another agenda item. Or, or putting something, having council vote on a potential, you know, future general business item. It's having at least two council members. And as we've seen in the past, um, we've had some council members in previous councils. That have done lots of motions that never get seconded. And I think this memorandum, um, was a way to at least kind of better define. What that is prior to the meeting and, and there are other ways of doing that. But, but this to me was seen as a toolkit for, for, um, less than a quorum. Two or three members of our body to, to discuss, you know, an issue and what they would like to see on a future agenda. They still need, you know, the full quorum to approve that. And so ultimately it's just kind of raise the information, you know, raise the, the knowledge level. Um, and that before a potential vote on what a future item is. So, so that's, that to me is, um, just another tool in the toolkit, whether or not, um. Whether or not we approve adding that tool back in tonight is the question. Um, going, continuing with questions or comments, uh, council member Mellinger.
Uh, yes, so, uh, through the mayor, I would like to respond to council member Melton's question. Um, I'm not going to speak for council member Fong, but I will say that I do not see this as a fourth route to put items on the agenda. Rather, I see this as an elaboration of the existing third route. Where council, where a quorum of council at a council meeting can ask for something to be put on. I'm going to speak, I'm going to editorialize a little bit. I've seen a number of meetings, uh, where that third route has been taken. And I, you know, all due respect to all past and present colleagues, I've rarely seen it done well. Uh, and the reason I've, I, I have rarely seen it done well is without a written document. In front of you laying out sort of what exactly is being put on the agenda. People tend to get lost in the weeds. Uh, there's a degree of fuzziness. Sometimes people get confused as to what is or is not being discussed. There's the constraints of the Brown Act, which is you cannot actually debate the item itself. You can only debate whether it should be agendized. Um, and so doing all of that. Without a piece of paper sort of summarizing, this is what we're actually talking about. Is actually really challenging. And from my mind, the colleagues memorandum process would help to give more structure to that process. And as I think about it more, you know, yes, the two or three members, that, that ensures that there is a second, right? That there's, you know, so what this is doing is it's taking this sort of very loose third process that we've got. And it's adding more structure. It's making it actually, in my mind, a more stable process. And one that's more likely to operate, you know, within the confines of the Brown Act, I mean, last year notwithstanding. You know, uh, speaking of, uh, the Brown Act, I see, you know, one change that I would make, you know, the bit where. Uh, it says you're submitted to the city manager is on the fourth bullet point. And I would pull that out, put it in bold and put it at the very top, right? This goes to the city manager. Or the city manager and the city clerk. It does not go to the mayor, it does not go to your, to the, to council at. Do not pass go, do not collect $200. I'd be very fine with a change in language on this that calls that out extremely explicitly. Uh, but from my mind, you know, this isn't about doing an end run around the mayor. An end run around the city manager or an end run around a quorum of council. It's about having a more structured process for putting items on the agenda. Uh, so thank you very much. I'm going to stop there.
Thank you. And next up is council member Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, council member Melton for the question. Um, I will not give away my secrets as in future. Uh, but, but I will give an example of something I wish I would have considered this process for in the past. Okay. And something that I wish that I would have considered this for was agendizing council to consider joining the Amamutsen Tribal Band. In their advocacy to preserve the sacred land at Eurastak. Uh, we were venturing into new territory. This was something a little outside of council's comfort zone. It's not something that we do terribly often. And I think that if I had considered the colleagues memo option, I could have gone into more detail as to why I felt that was important. Why other people felt it was more important. And I think in that way, council would have been more prepared to make that vote. We eventually did it. But I think that it would have been a really good way to ease the waters into something that we're not necessarily comfortable with. I wouldn't do this for every study issue at all, um, but just more in, is this a comfort zone? Is this what we want to do? Let me flush it out so that we may have more information. I would have joined with some colleagues and, and made our case. And I, and I think that vote would have been different if I had done that. So I regret, regretfully didn't, but, um, I think that's the case in which it would be appropriate.
Thank you, council member. Uh, next up is council member Melton.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thank you for, um, letting me turn my microphone back on, um, and speak a little bit more to this. Thank you, Richard, and thank you, Alyssa, for, um, helping me understand a little bit better. That's really awesome. Um, and I take great comfort in, um, council member Mellinger's assertion, you know, I, I wrote down, he said, we're not looking for a fourth route. We're looking for an elaboration of the third route. Um, and so that's really awesome. I heard council members Cisneros talk about the juristat discussion that we had last year and how that, um, in her mind could have been. Aided by utilization of the process that was available to us last year. Um, so. Um, I'm just putting my words together here. I, I, I get it and I appreciate what we're trying to do. I find myself thinking that, um, you know, when I've used a motion to agendize, which is the so-called third route. And maybe our, uh, semi unofficial parliamentarian, who happens to be the chair of our planning commission could, um, say a few words about. Um, motions to agendize, uh, but one of the things I really want us to be careful about in this third route. Whether you're doing it spontaneously during council member comments at the end of an agenda, right? The typical process that I'm familiar with is the council member rises with a motion to agendas. I rise with a motion to agendize topic XYZ for a future agenda. And we all have to be very careful to not get into advocacy about the actual topic. And that's a, a tricky thing to do. Um, and I find myself wondering, you know, if this colleague's memo. Is used as an aid for route three. It will want to be an advocacy document more than an informational document. And I guess I heard Richard talk about, you know, the fine line between information providing and advocacy. But I'm just not sure I see how that happens in this process. Maybe the city staff could, you know, say, uh, I don't know, I, I, I don't want to put words in staff's mouth. But would there be some sort of editorializing or scrubbing of this colleague's memo? To make sure that we don't venture into advocacy and just keep it at providing of information. Thank you for, Mayor, for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you, council member. Uh, council member Sal.
So I just wanted to know how this would work. So the colleagues memo would go to the city manager and be two or three, um, colleagues working together on that. And, um. If it veered off into like seeming, uh, to be advocacy, who would make the call? Like it needs to return to the council members and it's kind of veering towards out and how would that like work?
So if I remember the policy right, there is an option for the council members proposing a colleagues memo to ask for the city manager's review. But it's optional. And so if I received a colleagues memo and it wasn't a request for review, it's, this is the final memo. Please place it on the agenda. It would go on the agenda.
Oh, so I would like, um, just because, you know, we have the Brown Act and. We already had one case and, you know, which different kind of thing. But I just like that, you know, checks and balances thing that the city manager, it wouldn't be an option. That it would, city manager would read and say, oh, it's kind of like going into advocacy, I'll just return in. I would think that a council member would appreciate that, like, second kind of eyes looking at him. They would go, oh yeah, like, and then return it back to the city manager. Like, I would appreciate that. Um, and then, so then it would go on to, uh, the agenda. And then it would kind of be at the bottom. And then, um, say at the end of the meeting, we would say, um, so there's this item here. Is there a quorum to support putting it on the agenda? Is that how it would kind of go? It would still require a quorum to put something on the agenda. Okay. Um, so, uh, if there's a motion to put this on, I would just request that it's not an option for the city manager to review it. It would be, um, required. That's our city manager, our attorney. That's what I asked.
Can I just add one, one comment? So in, in the, the previous pilot, the, there was a deadline right of noon, the day before publication. If you didn't ask for the city manager's review. And then if you did want city staff review, it was limited to one hour, right? Because, uh, a quorum of the council hasn't directed staff to do that review. So I think that the one thing just to contemplate is depending on. How fine some of you might draw that line. It might take staff more than one hour. And if we're going to truly follow at least the previous pilot, uh, at one hour, we're going to stop and it'll be published. So it would just be. That's another comment is, but depending on, on what you all write and what the topic is, one hour may or may not be sufficient to determine that. I don't know, Kent, if you disagree or have anything else to say or.
And thank you for that. And before we continue around the circle, uh, actually, council member Ressel, did you have a follow-up before? It's, we're still kind of.
I want to say that, um. I think this colleague memo is not to put more stress on the staff. It's to be kind of more helpful. And so if it seems like we're putting staff into an hour deadline or something like that. I also would not want this process to be putting extra stress onto staff. When the staff has like, you know, their, their work that, you know, is on the agenda, their day-to-day work. And so I would also ask that there be more flexibility. If you miss a deadline for whatever time that the staff sets up. Then you just wait till next month. And so that's just my thought.
And, and thank you for that. And, and as far as who this goes to, I'll ask, I'll ask staff for my. You know, and I didn't bring this up previously, but, but I do think going to the city manager as well as the city attorney. Uh, to looking at whether or not it, it, it's reaches the advocacy level. I think having both of our experts, uh, take a quick look. And whether or not it's the hour, this is the hour of staff time or the hour of our, uh, city attorney and city manager, I know it's critical. That being said, you know, making sure that we're not going into advocacy and pushing back. I, I do think that's important from, from staff, uh, but do you have a comment, city manager or city attorney?
I think in most cases, it wouldn't take an hour to review a draft colleagues memo particularly. I, I will say though, that if you, if you want John and I both to review it, you're, it adds to the timeline. So we, I, I would want to move the, the submission deadline sooner. Um, and for, for two people to review, now you're down to a half hour. So I, I'd prefer to have one staff member review it. I think that would be less than an hour. And I, anyway, I think it's doable. I don't think it's a big imposition on staff to do the review.
And, and I appreciate that. And, and I was never completely fine with that. Let's say the hard deadline as far, and how, how close to that tier cutoff it was, was always a question, you know, for, for how things are published. But, you know, if there, if staff would like additional flexibility at this point, you know. I, I do think as council member Sal said, you know, it is incumbent upon us to, to get it to staff as quickly as possible. And to, to turn it in right before the deadline and say, okay, drop everything and look at this. Never, never made sense, but, but we wanted to see how this process went. And as we saw last time, um, it didn't go well, but hopefully the education of our council that's currently seated. Uh, we'll make sure that that never happens again. Um, council member Mellinger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, I thought council member Sal had an excellent idea, you know, whether. I, I think that having mandatory review by the city manager's office, uh, before it goes live, I think that's a very good idea. I think it's supported by the charter, which gives the city manager control over the agenda. Um, and I trust the city manager's office and the city attorney's office to recognize a potential Brown Act violation pretty quickly. Um, you know, you can pretty quickly tell if something's crossing the line, I would imagine. Um, and so I think having that review to make sure, eh, you know, and if it looks, if it crosses the line. Or even if it looks like it's crossing the line, it gets bounced back and say, hey, you know, make this language more neutral. Remember, you're talking about putting it on the agenda, not advocating for the item itself, et cetera. Um, but I, you know, I'm happy to have that as a safeguard. Um, and I, in terms of timeline, as council member Sal said, yeah, if you get it in wait, late, wait till the next meeting. And I'm happy, you know, if staff thinks they need an additional, you know, additional leeway here, you know, uh, in terms of the timeline. I'm entirely fine with that. Thank you.
So there are oftentimes where council members make a motion to agendize in the future. And there isn't a time boundness to it, right? Sometimes they say in the next two meetings, in the next two months, um, this previous pilot had very specific deadlines. Uh, one option could be to make those deadlines further away from production, production. Or potentially they could just, the deadlines could be removed. So it's submitted, staff reviews it. And as soon as that can be completed, it goes on the next agenda. So it's kind of how much timeliness does the policy want to force? Just a, a thought, a suggestion, either way, extend the deadlines or not have the deadlines.
I actually very much like that approach because that gives the maximum flexibility to staff.
Thank you. Um, council member Melton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with everything that council member Sal said a few minutes ago. And I appreciate her, um, excellent synthesization of the discussion as I saw it heading. And I agree with everything she said. Here are some things from the policy that we tried last year. That I found myself particularly in favor of, uh, that I would like to see in this, if it comes back. Uh, first is that we put a clock on it. It was a trial and we treated it as a trial. And I would like this one to be treated as a trial. So in the policy last year, it said absent city council action. This subheading becomes inoperative on January 1st, 2023. So I'd like to see that language in there. Said that memorandum shall not exceed two pages. So I think that's important. And it sort of speaks to what I heard the city manager say about staff review time. So nobody's going to cough up a 10-page treatise on, um, something two pages to get the point across. Um, says here, completed colleague memorandum will be included under the non-agenda items and comments. Portion of the council meeting agenda. I totally agree with that. Um. And then it says, a colleague's memorandum is not required to request an agenda item be added to a future agenda. And my way of saying that is there can still be motions to agendize, right? Verbally without, uh, memorandum being present. So those are some things that I thought really worked well. And I'd like to see, um, continued if this policy is to be re-adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further. Uh, council member Cisneros.
Yeah, quick question that I thought of. So let's say we do a verbal, uh, motion to agendize and it fails. Can we go back with the council memorandum and ask again? Or is that like one bite at the apple?
I'll, I'll go to the city attorney on his comment on that.
So if I understand correctly, w- once it's agendized, then it would come back to.
No, so, so she's, so basically it's, it's at the end of the meeting during the info only, or during the non-agenda items. A, a motion is made, a quorum does not, uh, approve that for a future item. And the count that council member then. And the count that council member then basically write a memo to either restate or further state or or re-reproduce completely the motion that was made that night.
So essentially, if it fails on a an oral motion, could they submit a colleagues memo?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd probably, I'd like to think of, because Sturgis says it can't be reintroduced. Of course, it's the council's policy, so the council's policy can always trump Sturgis. So it it would be within the council's purview to say if it did fail that individual council member or less than three council members could go the colleagues memo route and have it come back to council.
And John, I I'm assuming that just the concept of the motion as made by a council member would be, let's say, a sentence, and here you have a page memorandum. There's a there's a distinction between there's a there's somewhat of a change, but I I I would leave it up to you to.
Yeah, it it's the colleagues memo is essentially a request for a motion.
Understood.
So if it's a request for a motion, can another council member then move the same thing back? If you were to do, so let's say it fails, and then let's say that council member writes that memo with another council member and that council member, the other one decides to make that motion.
Well, s- s- see, it's interesting because what Sturgis is in the rule and Sturgis is intended to do is to once a quorum of the council acts to approve an item or deny it to say, whoa, you don't get another bite of the apple again. Um, I I I think it's, I can't remember how long it is off the top of my head, but I can look real quick if we need to. But that was really talking about the substantive motion. We will award this contract. We will do this project. Uh, this is more putting a concept before the council and saying, do you want to entertain this? Do you want to discuss it? So I could see where it doesn't totally fall within what Sturgis was trying to uh control. Um, but if the council directs us to come back, we'll definitely out make a note um that we should look at the Sturgis rule and make sure that if we need to articulate explicitly that this is not subject to Sturgis and it can be brought back through a colleagues memo, we we just include that.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. So we don't know for now if coming back and having a secondary council member reintroduce it within that time period. If we don't know if that's applicable or not. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the answer.
If I if I had to make a decision on the spot, I would think that that like I stated earlier, the the purpose of the Sturgis rule was to deal with a substantive emotion rather than a procedural motion. So I think it would be allowed under Sturgis, but it would be good to read it again and 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 make sure that my memory is accurate. But if we come back, we'll we'll make sure to to address that issue.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was my last question and somewhat comments from council. Uh, I will open the public hearing on this item. Members of public wishing to address council, please submit a speaker card. If you are in person or raise your digital hand now or dial star nine on your telephone to indicate that you wish to speak, I'll call members of the public uh in person first, and then the city clerk will ask any remote participants to unmute their microphone when it's their turn to address council. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. I have one speaker card. Uh, Martin Pine.
Good evening. I'm Martin Pine. I'm speaking solely on my own behalf tonight. Uh, first of all, to the parliamentary question that just come up, which is really interesting. It's basically what, to my mind, it's whether it would be considered a class that the motion to agendize would be considered as part of the class of renewable motions, which are a thing. I I think that would actually be a good thing to just get an answer to generally, because even with the current oral practice, it would come up whether or not you could essentially renew a motion to agendize at a at a subsequent council meeting and how motions to reconsider would factor into that. And there's this whole stuff that I think would be interesting to get clarification on. But what the reason I actually put in the speaker card, though, is because what I think this process would be really good for is public engagement with motions with motions to agendize. Because as it is, when a motion to agendize comes up at a council meeting, it's at the it's at the end of the agenda. And generally speaking, there's no notice to the public at all. There's no opportunity for public comment. So if a motion to agendize pops up at the agenda, at the end of the agenda, and I'm watching the council meeting, I'm like, oh, I have a really strong opinion on whether that should be on the whether that's worth council's time to discuss. I, as a member of the public, I can't do anything about that because I'd hope my council members are not pay are not getting distracted by me frantically texting them while while on the dais and like, I don't even know what other option I'd have. With this, with this, there would be on the agenda, there's, so I could actually go to my council, go to my council members, my district council member, my mayor, other council members that want to listen to me uh and be like, hey, you should hey, this is a great idea. You should, this should, this thing that should totally be on the agenda, or this is a terrible idea. This is not worth staff time. Vote no. And I can do that, and I don't, and I, as a member of the public, don't have to worry about laundering a Brown Act violation because it wouldn't be like, oh, I heard that I heard from council member X that they were planning on dropping this motion. Because if I start going around to other council members and saying that, then, oh, I've just ma- managed to create a serial meeting. So just from a public engagement perspective, I think this is a great idea. That and uh I think that's all I had to say. There are some I do find the parliamentary wrinkles particularly fascinating, but I will defer to our excellent city attorney on any of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speaker cards. City clerk or is any remote, anyone remote wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor. First up is Stephen Meyer. Stephen, you've been unmuted, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello. Hello, good evening. Mayor and council. Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your attention tonight. Uh, Mayor had great comments. Uh, Martin Pine had great comments. Uh, I think the comment I liked from the mayor was regarding efficiency. Uh, sometimes the city needs to move quickly and council members might want to get items onto the agenda so that the city can move faster. Uh, study issues are great, but they are quite heavyweight and they just consume a lot of overhead. And they only get scheduled once a year. So having a ladder weight process to get items onto the agenda seems quite appropriate. Uh, one example I can think of, because Councilmember Melton asked for examples. Um, in general, I think this city needs to respond to state level initiatives whether it regards housing or the unhoused or or pandemic or whatever emergency that might come up. Uh, and in particular, I would like to say that grants sometimes might come up. And if grants ever need uh action by council uh or policy changes by council, then it would be a good way to go try to get money. So with that, I would like you all to support this tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, that was the final public speaker, remote public speaker.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Uh, Councilmember Mellinger.
All right, I think I am ready with a motion, but before I do that, I would like to ask staff a question as to whether you need exact wording on the policy statement or if it's sufficient to provide direction and have you come back with the wording.
I think uh either way could work tonight. It would be helpful to, I mean, I I think the the concept, right, of putting the language at the top of who it goes to, I don't, I I think that's a great suggestion that we're, I would recommend putting in. Uh, I think the, you know, if if there's interest in modifying the timeline, extending it, changing it, eliminating it, any of that, whatever council is interested in, maybe you don't need to come up with the exact language tonight, but you can come up with conceptually what you would want different from the previous pilot. Um, there was interest in having a kind of an automatic sunset telling us what that should be. Do you want a three month sunset, a one year, you know? Is it going to be till the end of this calendar year? Just some idea of where to go with that. And then, I don't know, uh, city manager, we think you, we could take whatever directions provided. If it's clear enough, we could come back with something on consent, depending on.
Yeah, I think if we get general direction from council tonight, we'll we'll finalize a draft policy and council can can adopt it, and we can bring that back quickly.
Perfect. So I am not going to torture you all by attempting to wordsmith this exactly on the dais. So, all right, my motion is as follows, to re-adopt the colleagues memorandum process with the following provisions. One, that it shall state prominently that colleagues memos are to be, where colleague memos are to be sent and that they are not to be sent to council members outside of the authoring group. Two, that the pilot shall last until January thirty first of next year. Three, that there shall be no definitive timeline on when staff shall put the colleagues memo in the agenda. Rather, the colleagues memo will be placed on the agenda after the city manager has had the opportunity to review and approve it. And finally, that the city manager will reject colleagues memos that he believes violate the Brown Act. Uh, and ask for further com- and and send them back to the authors for revision. I believe that covers just about everything that we had. All right.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sisneros.
Yes, I do believe you got it. So I second.
Thank you. To your motion.
Uh, thank you very much. We've talked about this a great deal already, but I believe this is important and valuable because, first of all, for the reasons that uh Mr. Pine mentioned, which I think are excellent, you know, giving the public greater transparency, greater opportunity to review these, you know, uh councils' efforts to agendize items. But also because it provides much more structure for the discussions on the motion to agendize. And I believe that those two reasons are very good reasons to support this, very good reasons to have this as a tool in our toolkit. Um, and that the changes that we've enumerated here, I believe, are sufficient to prevent any further, you know, errors with this process. And so I respectfully urge my colleagues, I vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, next up is Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I agree with uh Councilmember Mellinger. Uh, all the poor bullet items are really good bullet items. I will be supporting that. In addition, I like what Martin mentioned. I also believe that residents or citizens should have some say in what needs to be added to the agenda. I fully support that. With that, this is a good tool to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Melton.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion. I appreciate um the bullet points that Councilmember Mellinger presented. I infer from his comments because he used the word pilot process, that what he was talking about was alternative one as opposed to a different alternative. And the operative, the reason I mention that is the operative language in alternative one is reinstate the pilot process. And the word reinstate to me means start with the language that existed previously. So I don't need to add, try to add to the motion, the things that I said before, because it's a reinstatement. So for example, we'll reinstate the thing about two pages. For example, we'll reinstate the thing about it shows up in non-agenda items. We'll reinstate the thing about um still being able to verbally make motions to agendize and so forth. Um, happy to vote yes. Let's see how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Dean.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll be supporting the motion. My appreciation to Councilmember Mellinger for all his thinking on it, for the bullet points that he outlined, they're all very good. Uh, and I'm I'm glad to support it. I had a an idea for a friendly amendment that I wanted to throw out. I'll say what it is, and I'll say a little bit about my thinking on it, and then I'd just love to see what the maker of the motion and the seconder have to say. Um, I would be interested in also incorporating uh directions to staff that uh in the last meeting of January of next year, that when it be brought back to council, it uh comes back on consent to reinstate it to convert it to a permanent process. My rationale for this is that if we do this for a year or slightly less than a year, it goes well. We don't want to make any changes to it, then it doesn't necessarily uh need to have a long meeting where we discuss too in depth on it. If it's not going well and we want to change it, or we want to, you know, we're like, all right, we don't like it, let's get rid of it, it can be pulled from consent. But uh if the process is going well and we're just taking what we have and saying, okay, let's just keep going. It just might be easier on all of us to do that quickly. Thank you. Uh, and so I propose as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. I'd rather leave that to the city manager's discretion.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Councilmember Sal.
Um, I went to um thank uh Councilmember Mellinger uh for incorporating some of the suggestions that I had and also getting feedback from the city manager. During this process, I hope that staff feels comfortable uh to tell us uh if they want more modifications to it. So um I guess I'll be supporting this, and uh I hope that staff feels comfortable with giving us feedback on if it's not working, how to improve it, and uh, thank you.
Thank you. And I will be supporting this motion. Uh, for me, this is, you know, another tool in the toolkit, you know, for and and I and I definitely, you know, suggest to all of our council members, work with the city manager, work with the mayor as Councilmember Mellinger did here. You know, bring potential items to me, and you know, this is, this is part of my job is to making sure that that, you know, within the Brown Act con- confines, and I'm very cognizant cognizant of that. Looking at what council should undertake, and in this case, it was trying to change, figure out whether or not we want to reinstate a policy, add that tool to the toolkit. You know, for me, um, this is, this is part of that process, and it helps to to some degree better define what we're doing late at night. You know, a lot of times when we're trying to agendize things, this is the very end of the evening. And either the maker of the motion might have, might stumble over what he's trying to, he or she's trying to do. Or conceivably, you know, the rest of the council members don't fully understand what that what that proposal might have been when we're, when they're trying to make that motion. And so I think this does, at least to some degree, for both the public and for other council members, at least give them some forethought of within within the confines of the Brown Act, what we conceivably put on a future agenda. And and that's why, you know, keeping this as a two-page, you know, very succinct uh proposal of what the future agenda item is, is really important. And making sure that you're not doing advocacy, making sure that you're not breaking the Brown Act, you know, all those sorts of things. And and the changes as currently stated, I look forward to seeing what the policy that comes back to council has. But I think giving them a little more flexibility, giving the city manager more uh control over if this is going gone beyond what the advocacy is uh for for what goes on in an info item agenda. So all those things make it, you know, to me, it makes it uh a tool that our council now has. We'll see where we stand at the end of January next year. But but that being said, I and I, as much as the vice mayor said, making consent, I do think it's important to have a further discussion, not just, you know, just not just immediately approving something which may or may not have um worked out. And yes, it could have been pulled from the consent calendar item, but I do think uh it is important to to have a further discussion when we, when we're getting to the sunset phase of this item. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, city clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
First up, Councilmember Mellinger. How do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Sisneros.
Yes.
Councilmember Sal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dean.
Yes.
Councilmember Melton.
Yes.
Councilmember Srini Vasan.
Yes.
The motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, next are council member reports.
If I may, I was able to find the issue, so since it's fresh in everybody's mind, if I could just take a quick second.
Sure.
So the rule is if the main motion failed at the meeting, it can't be brought up at that meeting. If it's a procedural motion that fails, then it's at the discretion of the mayor to be reconsidered. So that way it's, we don't have to put it in the staff report. Everybody knows the answer already.
Thank you for that. Uh, next are council member reports on activities from intergovernmental committee assignments. Are there any? Councilmember Mellinger.
Yeah, uh, and uh, Mr. Carnahan, could I get the uh slide, please? Uh, last month. Uh, last month I attended the Caltrain Local Policymaker Group to, uh, and one of the major topics of discussion. Uh, we received a report from the High Speed Rail Authority, but also, uh, a set of program strategy goals for the grade separation, the holistic grade separation program that they're beginning to form. Uh, and so this is the revised set of goals based on our input at the meeting. Uh, and I want to call out two things that I actually, uh, asked for and that were added to this. Uh, one was on safe and equitable mobility. Uh, that second point with on prioritizing walking, biking, transit, uh, and emergency response was essentially, I quoted our, uh, general plan at them and suggested that they adopt a similar structure. And then the second one, if you go all the way to the right, um, uh, I asked for a point to minimize disruptions during construction. Uh, Caltrain riders have been extremely patient during the electrification process with cuts to weekend service and bus bridges and so forth. And while that has been necessary, I think it's, uh, you know, certainly we should prioritize minimizing that is a consequence of future grade separation work. So, uh, work on that is continuing and I hope to hear, you know, or myself or Councilmember Cisneros will probably be hearing more on that next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, next up are non-agenda items and comments. Councilmember, Councilmember Mellinger? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to mention that, um, I went to Washington last week for the NLC City Conference along with Councilmember Sell and Councilmember Srinivasan. And I thought it was an excellent trip on behalf of the city of Sunnyvale. Um, I hope that Councilmember Srinivasan and Councilmember Sell share some of the highlights that they picked up. But I'll mention, um, some things that I noted from the conference. Um, there's a new thing coming, uh, from the federal government, an unfunded mandate, so to say. A new requirement called the Federal Data Transparent, the Financial Data Transparency Act. I asked Tim Kirby if he's ever heard of this before and he has. It's something that's coming down four years from now and it requires government agencies with bond issuances like the city of Sunnyvale to transmit their financial statements in machine readable format, whatever that means. This was buried deeply into a federal Pentagon budget piece of legislation a year ago on page three hundred and fifty something, and it was buried in a paragraph. And so we'll spend the next four years trying to figure out what that means and then, um, what the impact is for agencies like Sunnyvale. Uh, the, uh, myself and Councilmembers Srinivasan and, uh, Sell spent a lot of time talking about Fire Station Two and trying to scrabble up some federal funding on that. Pleased to hear that, um, Councilmember Rokana has added Fire Station Two on his final fifteen list for potentially three million dollars of federal funding. And I acknowledge, uh, Mayor Klein has been working hard on that, um, separate multiple channels elsewhere, as have we all. It was really great, um, that, uh, Representative Kana spent some time, uh, with Councilmember Sell on one day. And then Councilmember Srinivasan and myself, a separate meeting. So that was awesome. Um, we also met with Representative Issues Staff. And the one notable that I pulled out of that is when we talk about sea level rise and the US Army Corps of Engineers. We heard from, um, uh, Anna's, um, staff member that the, um, US Army Corps of Engineers went to Anna directly to talk about their updates, um, to Phase One and Phase Two and Phase Three. And I took great encouragement when I heard that Anna, in her own way, expressed to the top leadership of the US Army Corps of Engineers, her tremendous sense of urgency that something positive happened. So it's great to know that we have Anna, um, on our side. And finally, I wanted to mention, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about Wyoa and the virtues of Nova here in Sunnyvale. Do not cut federal funding on Wyoa and also please do whatever's possible to recognize, um, cost differences that are the reality of Silicon Valley. Or federal funding mandated, things like, um, uh, compensation levels for our head of Nova. I think city staff Kent did a tremendous job, um, really in preparing the council members to go out there. Um, I know it's kind of tricky sometimes to name names, uh, but I'd like to call out, um, Michelle Zahari and Victoria Cattell for, um, their hard work and scheduling. Michelle's policy papers were top notch. And then we have the new one-pagers, uh, for the funding request that very quintessentially say, uh, why we're asking for the funding and why it's a good thing to do. And when you've only got thirty seconds to get your point across to whoever it is that you're talking to, you really need these documents. And again, I wanted to acknowledge Mayor Klein. I, I think you brought that idea back from Washington on a previous trip that we needed to step up our game. And staff sure did do a great job with those one-pagers. I, I've got another thing I wanted to mention, but I'll, I'll, on, on non-agenda items, Mayor, but I'll turn off my microphone for now. Okay, I'll, I'll keep going since my microphone is, is on. I wanted to talk about, um, our city manager Kent Stephens for a second. Cause we're sitting here right now in our beautiful city hall, Kent, and I don't want to embarrass you by throwing some accolades in, in your direction. But I've been a council member for a while and Larry and I, you know, have both been on council since like twenty sixteen and early twenty seventeen. So I, I've seen a lot of how we got to where we are, Kent. Um, and here's how I connect the dots. Um, obviously this was a massive team effort. I've heard you say that Kent, and I, I understand that's true. Um, but I wanted to say here at this council meeting that this was all under your leadership, Kent. Um, I first met you in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. You had just started as the Public Works Director for the city of Sunnyvale. And then Deanna appointed you to be the Assistant City Manager. And shortly after that, the whole Civic Center Modernization Project was born by city council and placed in your hands. So from my perspective, you've had your hands on the steering wheel of this since day one, and here we are today. Um, I was on the Planning Commission back in twenty fifteen timeframe when there was, you called it a Congress of all the boards and commissions. And so you've got thirty or forty commissioners from all the different commissions over at the community center, sort of ideating and envisioning what we want Civic Center Modernization, um, to look like. And fast forward to October twenty seventh, twenty twenty, that was the legendary public hearing where city council approved on a four to three vote, the one hundred and seventy-four million dollar project with Hensel Phelps to build the new city hall, the new public safety EOC building, and a bunch of other really important stuff. Um, I bumped into one of the council members at the ribbon cutting yesterday, um, who was part of the three who voted against the motion. And, um, this former council member said to me, you know, we really did end up in a good spot. Um, looking at this incredible new building. And my response was, you know, it doesn't matter today whether you voted yes or whether you voted no. It was all voices were, uh, made to matter Kent during this incredible public outreach and all the work with all the boards and commissions, all the work with multiple city councils. And of course, during this process, there's going to be a lot of friction with different ideas and people advocating for what we wanted. Um, but at the end of that meeting, we had the four to three vote to proceed. And brother, did you proceed Kent? Um, with all of, um, the work that went in through the, um, uh, realization of the design and the building and the facilitization and opening of where we are here. So I wanted to, um, just give you my top shelf A1 commendation. Um, for the point that we're at right now, I'm looking forward to phases two and three of the Civic Center Modernization. Phase two, of course, is the library. Phase three, way out in the future is what we're going to do with DPS building. And I'll just say, Kent, I still have a dream. I still have a dream, that courthouse building. Maybe we can get that back into the hands of the city of Sunnyvale and truly realize, um, all of the potential awesomeness that is um, the Sunnyvale Civic Center. Again, thank you so much for your incredible leadership. Um, and all of the teamwork that went to, um, getting into where we are right now. Thank you for letting me go on for a bit, Mayor. And with that, I'll turn off my microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Uh, next up is Councilmember Cisneros.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I wanted to offer my colleagues a chance to go before me. Um, because I, if they have things related to, um, the trip, I want them to go first after Councilmember Melton.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Srinivasan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, yeah, I was also, uh, with, uh, Councilmember Melton and, uh, Councilmember Sell in Washington DC attending National League of, uh, Cities. Uh, I, I wanted to echo, uh, Councilmember Melton's, uh, comments. Thanks a lot to the city staff for a wonderful trip. And then the, it's not from the air ticket to all the planning. It was so wonderfully done, all our schedules, everything was, uh, top notch. We, we, we had one sheet of paper. We could literally say, okay, from here we are going there, kind of a thing. And then the issue papers were awesome. Where, before the meeting, three of us would meet and then discuss what we needed to, who goes past and then what we need to talk about. But all those things came from the issue papers. Thank you very much. I want to really, really, uh, thank the staff for a wonderful job done. Uh, regarding the conference itself, uh, the, uh, Councilmember Melton talked about meeting with, uh, on the Congressman Rokana, Anna issue, and then, uh, our, uh, Senator. Uh, I didn't, we didn't go to, uh, meet, uh, staff of the senators by instinct. We were busy, but, uh, all the other, uh, agencies we met, some of the agencies FAA, DOT and, uh, other, within DOT, there are so many divisions, all those things we could need. And then a couple of things came to my mind regarding the, the top things we need to, we, we can leverage or, uh, uh, federal government has got a broadband grant program. I, I will write up in my memo what that is. That is very impressive. And then the FAA, the airplane noise which has been bugging Sunnyvale for a long time. Finally, we might have not a solution, but at least a, uh, indication where it is going. Those are my comments, but once again, the Capitol visit was excellent, very well arranged. Thank you very much. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Srinivasan. Uh, Councilmember Sell?
Um, I wanted to echo what my two colleagues mentioned. Um, how the staff put us in a really good position in, uh, preparing us for that trip. Uh, I could see that when we met with staff, our department, um, federal agency department people, um, they would come to us and say, oh, you know, we didn't look up, uh, what you wanted to talk to us about, but let's just talk about. And then we were able to whip out a piece of paper and the piece of paper summarized clearly what we wanted to speak to them about. And then we wanted to speak to them about another subject area that, uh, we wanted to say was important for Sunnyvale. Whipped up another piece of paper. So, uh, we ended up like conversing with them and they, they many times mentioned, wow, Sunnyvale is so well organized. And so we have our staff to congratulate for that. Um, Sunnyvale is not as big as some of the other cities that were there, but, um, we were highly prepared. And, uh, I think I mentioned this to Kent in our one-on-one. Um, we were up there with the big leagues, like the large cities. We were prepared in that way. And, um, I also, uh, appreciate all the many meetings that staff, uh, scheduled for us. There were probably over like two hundred, um, California, uh, council members and staff there. There are probably like three over three thousand attendees there, but we got appointments with several agencies. We got appointments with, um, two senators staff, a, a congress member in a neighboring district and Congressman Rokana, two meetings with him. Um, so it's just phenomenal that staff could work with all those, juggle all those schedules to allow us to meet with them. And I also noticed that, um, they took our meetings because Sunnyvale has a good reputation. Um, in their eyes and the federal government, like we would talk about Moffett Park and building. Um, our goal is to build twenty thousand housing units. And, uh, we're talking to, uh, Senator Padilla's staff and he goes, oh yeah, we've heard about that. And then are we would talk to, like I talked to, uh, Senator Feinstein's staff and I mentioned about the Moffett Park and, um, you know, that was really interesting to them that, uh, in other places, they're just, you know, kind of, it's hard to, for those municipalities think about building houses. And here Sunnyvale's goal is to build twenty thousand housing units. And we talked about how that related to, um, sea level rise, how important is for us to keep focused on that. So we could achieve our goals in North Sunnyvale with Moffett Park and, um, how important that was to other things such as, um, building the Branch Library in Lakewood, how we need to make North Sunnyvale a high resource area. So it seemed like all the talking points that staff prepared us for, like all connected. And then the staff members were all with us, with Sunnyvale, with our goals and how important they were. So I felt really good about that. It's not just Sunnyvale feeling good about all these goals. It was the, uh, federal government representatives there say, like, we're with you and, you know, and I think, um, we met with, um, uh, Congresswoman, uh, ESU staff and we met with her legislative director. And, uh, we talked about grade level separation and, um, he was, uh, supportive of our efforts. And he gave us insights about, you know, how we might, uh, approach that. And I'll share that with staff and, and in a write-up. Um, and, you know, many a times they would say to us, like, the senators staffs and Congresswoman's staff, who is not even our representative. If you need our help, just ask and we'll like be supportive with, um, with what you're doing. So it was just, I think like, you don't get that sense unless Sunnyvale has good credibility. Sunnyvale sent three council members to meet with them and we were so organized and prepared. So it's that kind of Sunnyvale way, uh, came across in our visit and, uh, staff, uh, and all the work that council and staff in our whole city has been working on. It just all worked well to bring home the message of what we're doing and that we're in unison with a lot of their goals at the federal level. The last thing I wanted to say is that it was exciting. I got to meet with Congressman Rokana. And before that, I had met with the Department of Energy, the Department of Transportation. We talked about the infla-, um, uh, Inflation Reduction Act and how the vision from the, uh, agencies was that uh, to fund EVs and corridors and highways and certain cities. And then I was able to talk to Congressman Rokana and Rokana, uh, Congressman Rokana was instrumental in helping the Inflation Reduction Act get across, uh, negotiations. So it was exciting to see full circle that, uh, the work that he is doing, the work that a, the agency is doing could possibly come back to Sunnyvale to help the constituents. So it's just a wonderful trip. Um, uh, a good investment of staff's time and our time and, and all the work that we do all year round. So I wanted to thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Sell. Uh, Councilmember Cisneros?
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to take a shot at not doing a colleague memo and, and, uh, move to agendize something. Because I don't feel like it's, uh, it's so novel that it would require additional explanation. But before I do that, can I ask the city, uh, city staff a question prior to that? Okay, uh, my question is, have we ever considered requiring earthquake vulnerable soft story and non-ductile concrete buildings to be retrofitted? According to sources such as SV at Home, we could have as many as four hundred such buildings in Sunnyvale.
Uh, to the best of my knowledge, we have not, uh, studied that in depth.
Okay, that, that's helpful because you don't want to repeat, uh, maybe something that had gone on before. But, uh, you know, the earthquake today, many of us felt it and it's led to some, uh, questions and concerns from the public related to how safe we are in Sunnyvale in the event of a big earthquake like Loma created in nineteen eighty-nine. So my study issue is, and I'll try to talk really slowly so that we all get it. I'm happy to repeat. Um, a study issue to determine the number of vulnerable soft story buildings defined as buildings with large open spaces where reinforcement sheer walls would be required in modern buildings, such as parking beneath apartments in older buildings and non-ductile concrete buildings defined as buildings with brittle concrete elements such as beams that have not yet chosen to retrofit their buildings to dramatically increase safety in the event of an earthquake. And to estimate the cost and feasibility of requiring that these buildings be retrofitted either at the time of renovation. either at the time of renovation or that all of these such buildings be renovated to meet earthquake safety standards within a certain timeframe.
Councilmember Mellinger?
Question for Councilmember Sisneros. Are you, is this a motion to agendize or is this a study issue?
A study issue.
This is a study issue. I'm happy to co-sponsor. Thank you.
Yes, and I misspoke earlier. It's not because we were just talking about it a lot, but yes, it is a study issue.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Melton?
Oh, I'll co-sponsor and thank you, um Councilmember Sisneros for proposing the study issue. Um there, I thank you for speaking slowly. There were a lot of words there. If if maybe staff senses an opportunity to synthesize or massage, I hope that would be okay with you and
Yes.
Um I would encourage you to work with the city manager for those sort of synthesization of, thank you. Thank you so much. Happy to co-sponsor.
And I'll also happily co-sponsor. Um I just want to make sure also that staff is looking at potential funding and what, you know, what has been required by other cities, but I'm assuming that that would be part of the study.
Yeah, I think that would be included in the study.
Good. Thank you. Happy to co-sponsor. Councilmember Sell?
My handles.
Oh, sorry.
Co-sponsor.
Vice Mayor Dean, Councilmember Sell?
I would also um be happy to co-sponsor um really timely since the earthquake happened today.
Councilmember Shrinivasan?
Yeah, co-sponsor.
Okay. I think we have everybody now. Okay. Um and I have a few non-agenda items and comments. First, I just want to thank Councilmember Melton, Shrinivasan and Sell for for representing the city uh in in Washington, D C at the Cala- at the League of Cities, National League of Cities. You know, I do think that that, you know, being exposed to, especially uh being exposed to what's happening at the federal level is critical and and representing the city, you know, making sure that that we're doing appropriate advocacy, pushing, you know, potential funding. Um funding for certain of our projects, you know, that's that's one of the things. And and kudos to city staff, kudos to um all of city staff because those funding reports, those one pagers that that city staff puts so much time into, I do really think help market our projects. That was, you know, one of the takeaways that I that I had at Califor- or National League of Cities last year, that I do think that that conceivably helps us, you know, get some additional funding that we haven't had in the past. Uh so thank you for meeting with with um our our federal representatives. Uh and you know, for me, it's it's been, you know, it it really helps and and I and I like the cohesive team. It's that planning, it's that working with city staff to make sure that that you're plotting the best way to to sell this project or or advocate for this and you know, really representing a very well-run city. And so that kind of goes to my second comment. You know, we are finally in the new city hall. We're not in the city chambers, those council chambers yet. But just being in this building uh is just a ma- is an amazement to my, in my mind. You know, we were very lucky and and thanks to the city manager, you know, Councilmember Melton mentioned, you know, all the hard work that he did in taking on this project and then putting, bringing the team together to continue in his stead when he didn't have the bandwidth to take over this project anymore. But but really, you know, it is amazing to finally be here, you know, having the ribbon cutting yesterday uh and talking to some of our former council members who had talked about, you know, a new city hall over the last thirty years. And yeah, the old city hall was only built fifty years ago, fifty plus years ago. But but the timeliness of of building the city hall is really critical. You know, it's like we 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 had some very opportune uh times as far as you know, as much as we had to deal with COVID, the the funding and funding opportunities during COVID construction team that was chosen probably was better because of COVID and approving the project prior to COVID uh actually gave us, let's say, some some wind in our sails as far as how getting this project done in just over two years, which I do think is is, you know, a feat in itself. Yes, we have another six months of of, you know, tearing down other buildings um and, you know, dealing with the the landscaping and all that. But but to me, you know, this building really represents that that innovation and and especially the sustainability. And talking to former council member who was somewhat against this project, uh it it makes it easier for us to talk to residents, talking to, you know, uh developers to say, we were able to do it, you can too. So making this net zero, making this lead platinum, you know, is kudos to the city manager. Kudos to all the staff who worked on this project and kudos to the previous councils who who set that as a priority. So, you know, for me, you know, this this has been a a very good few weeks to be in this new building and and meeting with city staff who say this will really attract, you know, potential new employees, you know, it's it's that, it's not just a great place, it's collaborating and and co-locating city staff that have never been under the same roof before. But it's also potential employees that that, you know, can be proud of a fantastic new building that they're that they're conceivably going to work in. And, you know, coming to the city, coming to, you know, the new city hall uh also from from an employee, from residents as well as cap- past council members, they're really impressed with what we've created here. And and so I just want to thank everybody who made decisions before as well as all the city staff that have that have done this. And that all comes down especially to the leadership of our city manager. So thank you, Kent, for that. And thank and thanks to all the staff, you know, it's it is just wonderful to be in this building now. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Um and city manager, do you have any comments tonight?
Well, after that, I'll have to say this was the best non-agenda items item in a long time. I do want to say I want to thank the council for all participating in our ribbon cutting. And we've been moved into this building for just a little more than two weeks and we've withstood torrential rains, windstorms, and now an earthquake in our first two weeks. So um it's a great building. Um I also, I want to take a minute and just uh remind everybody, the last three council meetings have been in three different places. And the tremendous work of our city clerk and his staff, as well as our I T department, there is a lot of preparation. There's a lot of wire, you can see that. Um but they've done a tremendous job to make sure we can have effective meetings for the city council. This room will be our home for the next couple of months and we look forward to an even better experience when we get in the new council chamber. So hope to make that happen soon.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll be moving to adjournment. This meeting is adjourned at ten nineteen. Uh thanks for everyone who is here. Have a good evening.